Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. So now it is five minutes after 7:00 p.m. We will commence with our regular meeting here on November 7th, 2022. Welcome to this regular meeting. Call a meeting to order. And Madam Clerk, would you please, oh, let me guide us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Everybody, please rise. Face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
With pleasure, Mayor. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Gofels.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Papin.
Here.
Mayor Bonilla.
Here. Thank you, Madam Clerk. So, as you all should know by now, we are quite excited to be back in person. And for those who choose not to be in person, we're still offering ways to take part virtually. Several ways, actually. So for those attending in person and you want to speak, you need to complete a yellow speaker form, which you can find at the back of the room. Please fill it out and submit it to the clerk and make sure you specify which item you want to speak about on the form. If you're participating remotely, you can use the Raise Your Hand feature in Zoom and you'll be called on at the appropriate time. If you're on your telephone, you can press *9 to raise your hand if you want to speak. And when called upon, press *6 to unmute so you can speak. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for that specific item. So now we're going on to ceremonial item number one, which will be honoring George Smith, San Mateo County's Veteran of the Year for 2022. I have a proclamation in my hand for Mr. Smith. I'm going to read it right now. Mr. Smith, by the way, is my neighbor right across the street, so I've known Mr. Smith closely for many years. Proclamation. Whereas the San Mateo County Veterans Recognition Luncheon recognizes veterans, patriots, and organizations that demonstrate exceptional service to the veterans in San Mateo County. And whereas recipients of the Veteran of the Year Award go above and beyond the scope of their daily work in service to the community, and the city of San Mateo is proud to have among us a citizen worthy of this highly honorable recognition. And whereas George Smith is a former San Mateo firefighter and veteran of the U.S. Marine Corps, where he served honorably in Vietnam in 1966. Whereas George Smith continues to uphold the ideals of freedom and democracy and has dedicated his time to serving veterans through his work with the San Mateo County Veterans Commission, City of San Mateo Fallen Heroes Memorial Committee, the American Legion Riders, and Marine Corps League. And whereas notably, George Smith worked to ensure final honors for veterans were given at the funerals of all Marines in San Mateo, San Francisco, Marin, Sacramento Counties when requested during the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas the city of San Mateo extends our appreciation to George Smith as well as to all who engage in activities to support our service members and advocate for veterans. And now therefore, I, Rick Bonilla, Mayor of the City of San Mateo, and on behalf of the city council, do hereby recognize Mr. George Smith as 2022 San Mateo County Veteran of the Year. And be it further resolved, George Smith will be formally recognized on Thursday, November 10th, 2022, at the San Mateo County Veterans Commission Seventh Annual Veterans Luncheon. Congratulations, George, and thank you very much for all of your service.
I just want to say I'm honored by this recognition. You know, I do this because I love it. I just want to make absolutely certain that all of our veterans get what they deserve, what they deserve. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, George. Now, George, 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 please stand by because we're going to come down for a photo op with you. But first, there is one speaker present here who wants to make some kind words in your honor. So I call to the microphone Mr. Thomas Weissmiller.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, thank you for recognizing George Smith for what he's done. I don't think I've had much, except he's a type.
The community is a titan to the veterans, and they're just, whenever he's asked to do something, he just shows up and do it. So thank you very much for doing this.
And now we'll be there for a photo op.
God, you put a coat on for me. I'm impressed.
Congratulations, George.
This is an update from Bob Palacio, Community Services Manager. Welcome, Bob.
Good evening, Mayor Bonilla. City council members, Bob Palacio, Community Services Manager for Parks and Recreation. I am joined by Senior Commissioner Monica Lee, who is also a member of the San Mateo Age Friendly Task Force. We're here to update you on the progress of San Mateo Age Friendly Initiative and more specifically, the document that will help guide the city, the Age Friendly Action Plan. All right, so what does it mean to be age friendly? So the goal of becoming a certified age-friendly city is to ensure that the city of San Mateo implements the types of policies and practices that make our city more livable for all people, especially older adults. Essentially, this means that our departments and the decision-makers within those departments understand the impacts of their decisions on our senior population, whether those are intended or unintended impacts. Okay, so how did we get here? City of San Mateo was selected in the second round by the county to enter the planning phase to potentially become an age-friendly city. We then, in February of 2020, just prior to the pandemic, we began work with the Center for Age Friendly Excellence Cafe, the Age Friendly Task Force, and many of the community members on the planning process. Our application was submitted to the AARP in September of 2020, and in October of 2020, we were approved and certified as an age-friendly city. Our action plan, which we're going to talk a little bit about tonight, will be submitted later this November.
So the concept of age-friendly cities originated with the World Health Organization. The global network of age-friendly cities and communities was established in 2010 by the World Health Organization to provide a framework for communities worldwide to make their places, places that are better for growing old. In the United States, the age-friendly network is administered by AARP, and our application was sent to AARP, and they are the ones that are administering our program. Membership in the network does not mean that we are already age-friendly. It represents a commitment by the city to work with the community, with its departments, with organizations in the city to make the city of San Mateo a more age-friendly place. And so part of that commitment is the action plan that we prepared.
Okay, so the action plan, the full document can now be found on the city's new webpage, Age Friendly San Mateo, and it's located on our city website. You can get there in two ways. One, you can go directly www.cityofsanmateo.org/agefriendly, or you can go to the main page, hover above Community, and then just select San Mateo Age Friendly, and you'll be able to see the full action plan. It is a requirement by AARP, if you're going to be a certified age-friendly city, you must have an action plan. And the action plan itself is really a roadmap for improving the livability of older adults. And what it does, it contains projects that we've identified that will ultimately help seniors in their daily lives and improve the community in which they live. Planning happens year one and two, so that was basically 2021, 22-ish. You identify those potential projects. We were a little ahead of the game, and Commissioner Lee will talk to you a little bit about that. And then implementation is now, years three through five, and we follow those planning steps and action steps to be able to pull those projects to fruition. And then year five, we evaluate, and basically at that time, we'll assess the progress and see what new projects we might want to, we might want to add as we move forward. Okay, the action plan itself focuses on eight areas. Commissioner Lee will take you through and some of the inaugural projects that we had and some of that progress.
So the World Health Organization identified eight domains of livability, what they call them, areas that you could look to to see how your, how your city, is that better, is doing in terms of being age-friendly. And we, they're listed here, the eight domains of livability is transportation, housing, social participation, respect, and social inclusion, outdoor spaces and buildings, health and community services, work and civic engagement, and communication and information. Clearly, those are not separate necessarily, they're interrelated. What we did as part of the application process is to look how is San Mateo already doing in all of these areas. And once we did that assessment, we used the results to then form the action plan and to also decide what projects to start with in our, in our quest to become more age-friendly in the city. So we have four inaugural projects that we have started, or already completed, actually, one of them. And the first one is the prioritizing safe walking routes. The map you see here is the result of a study that was done by one of our members, Vince Semenides, who studied and mapped the areas in which seniors in the city are most likely to live and walk, and the areas from their houses where they're going to walk. This map is now been given to the planning department and to the public works department, and they can use it in terms of prioritizing repairs to streets, make them safer as they go forward with other work that they're doing. The second project is the outreach, age-friendly news articles. We have a slide for that, which is this one here. Basically, what's happened is the city of San Mateo has a lot of programs and services for older adults that are very useful, but many people don't know about them. And so one thing that the task force was doing is trying to get the information out to the people that need to have it. What we're doing is we're sending out every month a news bulletin that highlights one of the many areas or programs that would be of interest to older adults, and the one that's up here is the most recent. It deals with Hi-CAP, which is a service that people can use to learn about Medicare programs and what, how to choose the right program. On the left side here, we have the brochure that we have prepared with information from the last 16 newsletters that we've been sending out over the last couple of years. So that's the outreach program, and we continue that. Intergenerational programming, social isolation is a real problem for many older adults, and what we're trying to do is give them opportunities to connect not only with older adults, but with other generations in the city. And so one of the approaches there is to use games, both virtual games and traditional games, to connect the generations. There are other things we're working on, but that's one of the other initial programs. And then finally, we have the Age Friendly Business Certification Program, which is an effort to make it possible for older adults to know which businesses are particularly suitable for them, and for the businesses to be so that they're more attractive to older adults. So we have done a questionnaire and studied to find out what's attractive and important to older adults when they use a business. We had 152 responses to the questionnaire. It's now being evaluated, and we will work with the team of commerce to implement that program.
Okay, so it's important to note that this is not a specific to Parks and Recreation program, this is a citywide initiative. And with that, the city collaboration was between, obviously, council has been instrumental in approving and giving support to the initiative, the Senior Citizens Commission, Parks and Recreation Commission, Parks and Recreation Department, City Managers Office, Community Development, Age Friendly Task Force, the AARP, City Library, Police Department, Public Works, Human Resources Department, and City Clerk's Office, to name a few of the departments that we have met with and talked to them about the things that they can do and what they're already doing to be more age-friendly. Those conversations will continue. We hope to meet yearly with our department as well as the task force, to meet with the different city agencies to have ongoing discussions and find improvements as we move forward. So that's it. If you have any questions, we're here to take them.
There we go. Thank you very much. I have a sticky switch here on this. Thank you very much for the presentation. I will now let council members see if they have any questions. I do have a question or some comment here.
I'm so thrilled to see you all here tonight and provide an update. I was hoping you could share some examples of what a certified age-friendly business might be. And, you know, as I get further along in my years, I noticed that I can't read the menus as well as I used to, especially in the dim lighting, and I'm just wondering if you've thought through some of the concrete criteria.
Yeah, some of those will be in large font on menus. There will be things like movable tables as opposed to fixed tables so that you can get wheelchairs through, things of that nature. There's other people that offer discounts for seniors, as well as just having senior-only hours, where seniors can go in and either get to a restaurant or a place to eat earlier or later in the day when there's less folks there so that they can actually move through it, making sure that the restrooms obviously are accessible and things of that nature. So there's a number of things that we're going to put forward into that certification, but those are just some of the, some of the few.
That's great to hear. And then I know that there was a pretty involved analysis of walkability for seniors, looking at some of the senior centers, the senior home facilities, and then their proximity and walking routes to community amenities. And I was wondering how, what steps we've been taking to integrate that learning and that analysis into our pedestrian, our pedestrian plan?
Yeah, I don't know specifically. I think the project that we, that we took on was that we were going to look at where the largest concentrations of seniors, where they were living, and then, as you mentioned, the accessible pathways that they would take to the grocery store or wherever it might be, a medical office, churches, rec centers, things of that nature. And then we provided Public Works with that overlay so that they could have it as another additional data point when they start making decisions, knowing that it wouldn't be, you know, the standalone, you know, decision-maker as to whether or not a pathway would get redone in that, you know, during that cycle, but it would be an additional important data point that if all things being equal, they could do that. And that was sort of specific to our project.
So there's another use of this study, and that is that the police department is looking at educating citizens to not park on the sidewalks, because, you know, if you have a walker or you're in a wheelchair, even if you're pushing a stroller, if there's someone parked on the sidewalk, it's very difficult to get through. And so having that information of where the older adults are most likely to be walking has been given to the police department, and they are now trying to work with this in their educational efforts and maybe enforcement efforts to make sure that sidewalks are not obstructed.
I'm so happy to see this effort come to fruition, and I see a lot of older adults in the room, and I hope that they'll come in support for this project and funding many of these projects and seeing them integrated throughout our master planning process, as well as prioritized through our council strategic objectives session coming in, you know, the next year. So thank you for elevating this.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda tonight is the consent calendar. Deputy Clerk, could you please read the consent calendar?
With pleasure, Mayor. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered by the council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that item may be removed and considered separately. Item number three, city council meeting minutes approval. Item number four, 2022 triennial building code update and adoption of dangerous building code, ordinance adoption. Item number five, appeal of administrative citation amendments, ordinance adoption. Item number six, sustainability-related amendments to the 2022 California Building Standards Code, ordinance adoption. Item number seven, mosquito vector control district, reappointment. Item number eight, art in public places 2022 report and plan, civic arts committee renewal and reappointments, approval. Item number nine, enterprise resource planning system replacement project, change order. Item number 10, private development and right-of-way support services, agreement. Item number 11, landscape services for Marina Lagoon Maintenance Project Habitat Mitigation Monitoring Plan, agreement. Item number 12, Fashion Island Boulevard and 19th Avenue Class IV Bike Way Application. Item number 13, wastewater treatment plant immediate action project, package two, appropriation. And finally, item number 14, wastewater treatment plant supply of liquid polymer contract change order.
Thank you very much, Mr. Deputy Clerk. Is there any member of the council who would like to pull any item from the consent calendar? I think I see.
Just, it was item number seven. Are we really reappointing Mr. Delantonio again? Delantonio again?
Yes.
I just wanted to congratulate him and thank him for his many years of service. I don't need to pull that item.
Not really pulled. Okay, thank you. Any member of the public would like to pull any item from the consent calendar for further Any?
Mr. Mayor, I have no in-person public speaking slips on the consent calendar. If you intend to comment, provide comments on the consent calendar, please raise your hand on Zoom. This is for the consent calendar. I have two hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, let's give them three minutes each.
First speaker is Simon Reading.
Have they, oh, let's ask them what item they would like to discuss.
I wanted to discuss the reach code.
Okay, so are we going to pull that then? Normally, they don't.
You could just provide comment.
Okay.
Can I go ahead?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Please state your name.
Yeah, my name is, sorry, my name is Simon Reading, and I'm talking about the reach code. So over the past few years, we've witnessed an increasing number of extreme weather events. Oh.
Mr. Reading, we can hear you, or we could. It appears we may have lost you. Madam Clerk, can we go to the next one?
Sorry, I think this is the wrong time for me, so my apologies.
No, the item you're talking about is on the consent calendar. It is item six, and it was not going to have any discussion. However, if you choose to pull it for a discussion, you can do so.
Sorry, no.
Thank you. Okay, next speaker?
I have no other hands raised.
No other hands raised. Oh, it appears we have somebody who may not have filled out a speaker slip. You may approach and speak. You can fill out the form afterward. Okay.
Please let me find your comment. Gary Germano?
Okay.
Thank you very much, council members. My name is Gary Germano, and I live in San Mateo. And on these, came to speak on the reach codes, not realizing it was on the consent calendar. So I have a real issue with one part of the reach codes, and that's requiring all electric appliances in new construction, and from what I understand, remodels that are major remodels in houses at this time. And a part of the reason is, as you know, energy can neither be created nor destroyed, it just has to change form. So we have to generate electricity using some other energy. Right now, according to the U.S. Energy Information Administration, as of this year, 60.8% are fossil fuels that we use for electricity to generate, excuse me, that we use to generate electricity. And part, that composes mostly 38.3% natural gas, which is probably the cleanest of them all. Coal is 21.8, the rest are less than 1%. We have nuclear at 18.9, and all the renewables totaled at 20.1.
One second, Mrs. Germano. Madam Clerk, could you stop the time for a second? I want to make a comment before you go in front of me, because in San Mateo County, we have Peninsula Clean Energy. 98% of the people in San Mateo County get their electricity from Peninsula Clean Energy. 100% of that energy is carbon-free in San Mateo County.
Okay.
So, go on, if that, I just thought that might make a difference in your comments there.
Not exactly, but I'll accept that, and then that's another, for another discussion.
We'll restart your time.
Okay, thank you. So in any case, the issue is, we have a problem with the electric right now. Whether they're getting it carbon-free or not, they still have to get it. And sometimes if they can't get it, they have to get it, not carbon-free, is my understanding. It used to be that way. Maybe it changed, but you can't kind of turn it off. So in any case, here's the deal. When you're building new homes, residences, I can totally appreciate, and I think it's your responsibility, to see that we have, we are wired for electricity in appliances and so forth that we don't have wired now, which would be electric water heaters, some, we have some electric dryers, we have some electric ranges, but electric furnaces are pretty much out. And those things need to be wired into new construction so we have an option to use all electricity. But it should not be forced to use electric stoves and electric heaters, any of those appliances, by code. The infrastructure should be there by code, because it gives us options. We don't know how we're going to end up generating electricity. If something happens and we get natural gas that they can add something to and make it perfectly clean, you can bet they'll be using it and generating electricity that way, and we'd have a good, a good go. But if not, you've heard the president say he wants to get rid of all fossil fuels. So you just took away 60.8% of the electricity. You aren't going to get it from solar panels, because they're not good enough yet, and they're not prevalent enough. They're not the most efficient. They are helpful, and they're good. So the point is, I think it's your job up there to make sure that these buildings are equipped for that, so that they can easily be put in, and the people decide at the time...
Mr. Germano, your time is up.
Okay, let me just...
Thank you for your comments, and we are indeed actually looking at that, so thank you for your comments.
Okay, I just don't want it mandated that you're telling us what kind of, we have to have electric.
These questions have been considered. Thank you.
Okay, so what are you approving tonight, then?
Second reading of the ordinance. Second reading of the ordinance, which you're raising your concerns about.
Okay, and then there'll be another thing to pass?
No, this will make the ordinance that we passed at the last council meeting a month ago final.
Okay, so then there's no more question?
If it passes, if the council votes by at least a majority.
And if it does vote, does it require electric appliances to be installed? That's what I want to know.
Yeah, I can't answer. There are a lot of questions in what you just asked, but I would recommend that you go ahead and check tomorrow morning with our sustainability person. Make a call.
Wait a minute. How can you not know the answer to that simple question if you're going to pass it tonight?
I know the answer, but it would take a while to explain it. And we're in the middle of a meeting right now. You made your comments. That's what we're doing here. We're allowing you to make your, we're all considering your comments right now and then we're going to vote.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, any council members wish to make any comments based on comments we just heard? Hearing none, then is there a motion?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and second, Madam Clerk.
Yes, I'd like to invite Councilmember Rodriguez for the record if you would like to record his vote.
Sure. I'm going to be voting yes for all items except item number six, the amendment to the building code standards, for which I will continue to vote no as I did at the ordinance's introduction. But I'll be voting yes on everything else.
So, I believe the motion was to approve only item six. You can vote no on that and then we'll vote on the rest.
I don't believe that's the case.
We'll take them all in one motion. Mr. Mayor, it's recorded for the minute, so we will take a vote for consent calendar items three through 14. And noted for the record is Councilmember Rodriguez is voting no on item six.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Councilmember Gorthos?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes, on everything except item six.
Deputy Mayor Pappan?
Yes.
Mayor Bonilla?
Yes.
And to summarize, the consent calendar items three through 14, with the exception of item number six, carried five to zero. Item number six carried four to one.
And let me just please remind people in presence tonight, we do not have, for many different reasons, applause or cheering or things like that because it's a public process. Everybody has to feel as though their position, whatever it is, is being heard fairly. So, thank you. I'd appreciate it if you please refrain from those kinds of things. Thank you. Next item on the agenda tonight is public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any speaker slips for public comment?
Would you like to go ahead and read the introduction to that?
Sure. Members of the public wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda tonight may address the city council at this time. State law prevents council from taking action on any matter not on the agenda. Your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up. Public comment is generally limited to a total of 15 minutes. However, that is subject to council discretion and can be extended if council wishes to do so. If needed, an opportunity for additional public comment may also be provided later in the agenda. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody for public comment?
So, at this time, if you are in person and you would like to provide public comment, please fill out a yellow speaker slip and bring it to me right away. And if you are online and you wish to provide general public comment, please raise your hand at this time. I'll give you a few moments to do that for general public comment. Please do raise your hand at this time. We will call the number of public comment so we can determine the time limit. Please raise your hand at this time or provide a yellow public speaking slip. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. In person, we have seven public speaking slips and last call for online public comment on general public comment for items not on the agenda are three speakers. The last speaker will be Leigh Anne.
Very good. A total of 10 speakers, so let's go with two minutes each, please.
Okay, if I could call up the first speaker, we'll take the in-chamber speakers first. This first speaker is Michael Winehauer.
Good evening, Mayor Bonilla, members of the council. My name is Mike Winehauer. I'm a central neighborhood resident. I'm a volunteer on the Robert Newsom Jr. for San Mateo City Council District Three campaign. Two weeks ago on October 25th, a citizen was driving down Palm Avenue and happened to capture on his dash cam what appeared to be Planning Commissioner Adam Nugent stealing Robert Newsom's campaign signs from the location near Highway 92. There was a lot of back and forth on this and I'll leave it to say that the net of it is that any reasonable person looking at the evidence here, a lot of you have seen this at this point, it's clearly Adam Nugent. It was sufficient that a council member emailed Mr. Nugent and asked him for an explanation. Now, it's important to understand here, it's not really about the signs. If someone had just come in and taken away the signs, no big deal, but this is a planning commissioner, someone who the community needs to respect and someone who's held to a higher standard. Furthermore, the signs were legally placed and we're dealing with something that has a statistically significant impact on elections, 1% to 2% per an NPR study. And they have an especially large impact on hotly contested local smaller races such as ours. It's further compounded by the fact that Mr. Nugent is an ardent supporter and has campaigned for Robert Newsom's primary competitor, Sarah Fields. So, there's a lot of interesting things around this. Sorry, I had to kind of put this together last second, but what Mr. Nugent did here in the face of a direct request from council to respond to this, it could have easily been explained away, even if he did it purposely and said, you know, my bad, I got caught up in the heat of the election. We'd forget about it, we'd be moving on. But he didn't. He waited nearly a week until a radio station picked up the story and it got a lot of traction on social media before he finally responded. And instead of sort of admitting to it and again saying, my bad, I apologize, I got caught up in it, he issued a carefully crafted response that was more or less a denial, saying he was picking up litter or he was somehow deputized to enforce Caltrans right-of-way, you know, laws, regulations. So, here we are and what we're looking for is, we're trying to establish trust and integrity with our council. Measure Y exists because we didn't trust the council. Now, we have an instance where we're looking to use the council to help restore integrity and honesty and demand that accountability and transparency from our commissioners, from the folks who represent the city of San Mateo. And I'm counting on you. And so far, what I've seen Councilmember Lee from your boilerplate response is nothing but denials and excuses for Mr. Nugent's behavior. So, I hope that'll change tonight and you'll agendize this and you'll bring accountability here and listen to the multitude of neighbors that have taken time out of their busy schedules to come here in person as well as online.
Thank you very much. Thank you for rising, but please hold the clapping. Thank you very much, Mr. Winehauer.
Thank you. The next speaker is Lisa Tanner.
Thank you. Good evening. Besides the people that are here this evening in the audience, I'd also like to point to the people who are here virtually to attend especially this part of the meeting on this subject. You are our council, entrusted by us to do what is best for our residents and for our city, entrusted to appoint those who should do the same. And right now, this trust has been waylaid. But we will not settle for this and we will not stand for Commissioner Nugent's misdemeanor actions. The signs were legally placed. Nugent had no authority to remove the signs. The contact information for the owner of the signs is two places on the signs. And where are the signs now? We have apologies, belated apologies, but we don't have the return of property. Once an act of this kind is carried out by someone who represents our city, we cannot leave it unchecked. This misdemeanor is still a chargeable offense. We look to you to place on your next agenda this item which has caused so much consternation with your constituents. Your people want council's formal review and discussion of this crime and to hear how it will be handled to our satisfaction. We will stand for nothing less. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Dave Cohen.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm Dave Cohen. I'm a resident of San Mateo and I'm speaking on behalf of Ethics San Mateo. I'm representing them by authorization by a majority of our members, which now numbers over 10. As my time is limited, I'm going to summarize our full statement, which you all have. And I'm sure you're familiar with my eloquence, at least in writing. The members of Ethics San Mateo and our supporters stand for truth, transparency, and ethical conduct by our city government. One of our priorities is to ask the city council to establish an independent ethics commission as part of the city governance. We believe there have been violations of ethical standards as well as state law, the penal code. These, you've seen letters, you've seen statements, you've seen Nextdoor posts for sure. Twitter is about, I'm not going to go into it. We respectfully demand that the city council take immediate action to cause an independent and transparent investigation of the following allegations. Statements by Planning Commissioners Patel and Ebner that residents of San Mateo opposing a project were doing so because they were racist. The theft of campaign signs, which Planning Commissioner Nugent has openly and in writing admitted to having committed. Councilmember Lee's use of social media linked to the official San Mateo webpage to promote partisan positions. If the investigations return findings that any of these allegations are true, the involved city officials must be sanctioned. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Kevin Simpson.
Hello, council. My name is Kevin Simpson. I'm a 14-year resident of North Central. I'm a renter, a progressive, an advocate of smart denser housing and housing affordability in general. I'm pro-choice. I'm an artist. I'm an amateur astronomer. I love Halloween. I love San Mateo and I desperately need a haircut. I also desperately want a civil, open, fair society and city. Like others, I want this council to know that while I'm not part of this organized group or Ethics San Mateo, I'm very disturbed by what took place here. I'm very disturbed by the pattern. Councilmember, Commissioner Nugent had to know that what he was doing was wrong, whether it's wrong by the letter of the law or wrong by the ethics of the act. He holds a position of public trust. He executes policy on behalf of the city in his actions as a member and he needs to hold himself to a higher standard. You need to hold him to a higher standard. You've heard what we have to say, what I have to say individually. Now, we want to hear from you. One council member has spoken out against it. One council member has said that it's not a problem, that it didn't rise to a crime and therefore it's somehow linked to disinformation and it's fair. We'd like to hear from all of you. Four of you probably won't be sitting here in a few months, but you are holding a position of trust and responsibility now and some of you will likely seek positions of trust and responsibility in the future. You need to hold your office through the last day that you serve in it. So, I respectfully ask that you tell us how you feel. If you honestly think that this is all small potatoes and not important, then we'll know that's how you feel. But I'm very disturbed by this and I know a lot of other citizens are and I do hope you'll respect our position on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker in person is Andrew, I believe it's Giocet.
You're here about the, he's here about the DSMA, the amendment, the whatever the, the funding for the DSMA.
Matter, okay. Thank you very much. The next speaker is Trina Pierce. Following Trina Pierce is Heather Cleary.
Good evening, council members. My name is Trina Pierce and I live in North Central. And I'm here on another issue. I've had a couple of the seniors that have called me and feel that they've been retaliated against because they asked for blue parking or blue painting in front of their homes because they've got disabilities, they have the placard on their cars. And ever since the parking's been removed, they've had a hard time parking. So, they, a couple of them got letters that said they're responsible for the sidewalks. So, I didn't know that. So, I'm here on that and I'm just hoping to hear if there's others that have received these kind of letters saying that if they don't fix it in 90 days, then the city will fix it and they will have to pay. And we're talking seniors and we're talking, some of them have property taxes to pay. So, 60, 90 days is not giving them much time. But they just feel like, you know, and if it's a law, I would, I've tried to look it up, but I haven't had time to really look it up. So, I just need to know what San Mateo's things, you know, their stance is on it. And if they're, and like I said, I'm here because if there's other seniors that are having this problem, I would like to hear about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pierce. We're not going to address that right now, but if you wait until we finish with public comment, we may get some comment from the city manager about that. Thank you.
And the next speaker is Heather Cleary.
Good evening. I'm Heather Cleary. I am vice chair of the San Mateo Area Chamber of Commerce and I am also a San Mateo resident. I'm here to thank you all for your partnership now through COVID as well as in the past. We are very grateful to be working with such excellent staff. Kathy Kleinbaum, Drew Corbett, Jennifer Chen, thank you all. We really appreciate our city and know that a thriving business community is essential to a healthy city. At the chamber, we are busy supporting events, doing ribbon cuttings for new businesses, creating our Business Action Center, our leadership cohort, as well as our foundation. And as we approach 2023, please know your chamber is working for this city. We are working on events. We are planning towards a vibrant local community for all our businesses and all our residents. Thank you very much for your support.
Thank you. That's the end of our in-person speakers. The next speaker virtually is Rick Ballard. Mr. Ballard, please unmute yourself. Thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Rick Ballard and I'm a resident here in San Mateo. I saw people in Nextdoor planning to attend tonight and make some of the comments you've heard about Planning Commissioner Adam Nugent. So, I made some time out of my evening to do so as well, unfortunately remote as I'm recovering from COVID. I know Adam that he did not ask me to be here. I know Adam to be a person of integrity who cares deeply about our community and volunteers his time to do important work here, someone who actually does clean up our neighborhood as part of his regular routine. But there's being an assumption made without evidence that a campaign sign Adam picked up was stolen from someone. That would be a stupid, pointless thing to do and unethical. Adam is not stupid and is a very ethical person. So, this is an insultingly bad assumption. If I was to make assumptions based on what I've seen in terms of how this has been organized, mine would be that this is a bad faith outrage campaign from some who do not like Adam's stance on certain issues in this city, as well as an attempt, which appears explicit, to then tie allegations to an existing council member, another planning commissioner they don't like, and council candidates in this election, even though they have nothing to do with it. And Adam has remained public And Adam has remained publicly neutral in this campaign, not working, not canvassing for candidates. I don't think there's any reason to bring up these ties unless this is a manufactured gotcha campaign. That said, instead of making assumptions about Adam or myself, the assumptions I've just stated, I suggest we all take a step back, stop making accusations without evidence, and especially avoid taking punitive actions based on stupid and highly unlikely assumptions of febrile. The idea that Adam is some thief skulking about stealing campaign signs is so ridiculous that it's an insult to reasonable intelligence. You can tell I'm a little emotional about this as I know him, and frankly, I'm insulted. Seriously, people. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Rich Krantz.
Good evening, folks. Commissioners, Mayor, my name is Rich Krantz. I've been homeowner here in San Mateo for 35 years, and I too want to lend my voice to the chorus of rising voices about removing the multiple signage of a competitive district candidate perpetrated by a current commissioner, Adam Nugent. I don't know him. I don't have any personal reference to him, but I do know what I saw briefly on Nextdoor. I demand, as we all do, a full investigation, including potentially criminal charges. We cannot be governed by an elite group of cheating officials who lack integrity. We talked earlier about the AARP thing about respect and especially respecting older people, and this flies in the face of that. Just because one official has lost his way, being temporarily dishonored during an election protest, the problem, however, is with the other city council members who appear to be doing nothing and have lent their hand to the tacit approval in hopes this is just going to go away. Additionally, the coward displayed by Mr. Nugent by pulling down the Nextdoor app, witness to his crime by claiming he didn't want his daughter to be filmed is just that, cowardice. We cannot trust you with the little things like campaign signs. How are we going to ever trust you with the big-ticket items like, for instance, the fish market project? It appears to be rotten. Respect us by dealing directly and immediately to correct this unethical act by a premier commissioner. I yield the rest of my time respectfully.
Thank you. Our last speaker was Leanne. Leanne has lowered her hand. We had called the end of public comment with Leanne as the last speaker. We have another person with her hand raised now.
Let's take the last speaker. Yeah.
Okay, the last speaker is Rayanne Motashemi.
You have two minutes.
Hello, my name is Rayanne Motashemi. Thank you, city council, honorable mayor. I am reaching out to provide public comment regarding the sidewalk repair program. I did hear the public comment from Ms. Trina Pierce a bit earlier in the public comment period, and just want to say that that's also of interest to me, understanding more clearly how the sidewalk repair program works and by city ordinance and other state law, what the responsibilities of homeowners are for sidewalk repair, and then also what we can do to assist homeowners, seniors, et cetera, who might have difficulty with repairing sidewalks and how we can help finance that and also make sure the sidewalks are possible. So I'm interested in working on that in the very near future. The other thing I wanted to say is that I did read and hear about the sign, campaign sign incident, and based on the account that I have heard as well as hearing that SMPD had concluded an investigation and found no wrongdoing, that this, that continued discussion of this serves to misinform the public in the sense that we're not providing all the facts and that we're not making clear that Commissioner Nugent did nothing wrong by removing illegally placed signs. I encourage the council to not facilitate further misinformation by not making clear what has already happened and transpired. And I think that if we are going to have a discussion about conduct, that we should have that discussion about other candidates and elected officials in the city as well in general. And note that this is, that this is a serious issue that should not be used for political purposes and instead should be used to further ethics in the city. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we have no more speakers. Anyone who started to raise their hands now, we are ending our public comment period. Thank you.
Public comment period is now closed, and I do want to ask if the city manager could please address the question from Trina Pierce regarding sidewalk repairs.
Sure, yes. So per state law, we do have an ordinance that puts the responsibility of sidewalk maintenance and repair with the homeowner. We do utilize some of our annual CDBG funding to do sidewalk repair in certain areas that are eligible, and North Central is one of those areas. With respect to the specific situations, I would need to evaluate those specifically, and I'd be happy, Ms. Pierce, to speak with you or the folks that have been impacted directly. So please contact me, and we can look at your, the individual situations and see what can be done.
Thank you very much. Did you get that, Ms. Pierce? Are you still here?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, councilmember Lee has something.
Can I, can I just ask for clarification that until that communication happens, that we stop the clock on any penalties?
Yes, I'm happy to do that, as long as I'm contacted.
Yes. Ms. Pierce, did you catch that?
I'm sorry, yes, I did.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I just have a question. So if we wanted to take it up further, this stealing of the sign, that would be, we'd have to move to agendize it? Is that right?
The mayor has a statement to read regarding that.
I beg your pardon? I'm sorry.
The mayor has a statement to read about the next steps.
Oh, okay. Thank you so much.
From the public comment we have just heard, it is clear that the council is being requested to take action on a situation with the commissioner. We have heard and understood your comments, have received the multiple emails, and our rules direct us to vote on placing an unscheduled item on an upcoming agenda under reports and announcement section of the agenda of the current meeting. Items can be placed on a future agenda with a majority vote of the council. The council may take this request up following item number 16 on tonight's agenda. Thank you for all of your comments. So now we move on...
I'll wait until then.
Thanks. So now we move on to item 15, downtown business improvement area. Jennifer Chen, the economic development manager, is here to speak on that. And Mr. Giocetto, this is the issue you're here for. Thank you.
I'm sorry, good morning, good evening, city council. We were just trying to clarify if someone was on the line for us. So this, the item, I'm sorry. I'm Jennifer Chen, the economic development manager for the city of San Mateo. The item before you tonight is a downtown business improvement areas resolution to modify the annual assessment of public hearing. As you might remember, on the October 17th meeting, city council approved DSMA's request to hold a public hearing on the modification of the basis and method of assessment for the DBIA. The city sent a second mailing to all downtown businesses with a copy of the resolution with the new assessment fees. The announcement of the public hearing and a copy of the resolutions were published in the San Mateo Daily Journal. The next part of the presentation will be provided by Sarah Mahns, the NBS's consultant by DSMA.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council, and members of the public. The portion of the presentation that I will handle this evening goes over the proposed fee structure. Of course, the DBIA is an existing entity and has a boundary and existing zones where service is being provided, and this proposal does not change any of that. The boundary remains the same, the zones remain the same. We do look at various types of businesses in terms of structuring the fee. We are looking at retail property and having the amount be based on gross receipts, and those tiers are unchanged from what they've been in the past. Financial businesses would pay a flat rate. Professional businesses would be based on the number of full-time equivalent employees that is a self-reported number. So those full-time employees, the equivalent of a 40-hour position. Service businesses are also based on the number of self-reported full-time equivalent employees. We did remove the miscellaneous type for this proposal because there were not many businesses in that category. It was a little confusing, so we clarified the methodology by removing that type. And we removed hotel because there were no businesses in that category either. Next slide, please. So again, here's just a little bit more detail on what types of businesses fall into each category. There is a memorandum that was provided at the last meeting that includes much more detail in that regard, but this should give a pretty good sense of what these various categories are. Financial includes businesses that are in the financial industry, such as money management, payments, digital banking, and then any brick-and-mortar financial services. The Mills Health Center would be making a voluntary contribution, and specifically that business. The professional category would include businesses that offer services that are very specialized, usually things that require licensing and regulation, things like software development and integration, cloud storage, online storage, gaming, medical, legal, accounting, architectural and engineering services are all examples of businesses that would fall into that professional category. The retail category would be businesses that have goods for sale, including food, bars, coffee, caterers, furniture, apparel, jewelry, any place where you might sell things. And services are businesses that provide personal services, things like salons, dry cleaners, auto body, gyms, vacation, or sorry, not vacation, vacuum repair shops. So those types of businesses would fall in that service category. Next slide, please. The proposed updated fee structure here, and I do want to point out it has been updated through the process of reaching out to the property owners and business owners in the community in the boundary of the district. We received feedback from many sole proprietor businesses, and that is a case where there's a sole proprietor with no employees, who really felt that the rate that was, had been established was not equitable. And so you can see highlighted in blue on this slide, we have made some adjustments to the methodology in an attempt to respond to the feedback and create a more equitable distribution of the fee. So those professional sole proprietors and the services sole proprietors, that's a new category that we've added. Previously, those businesses would have been in professional zero to five employees and service zero to five employees. So we've separated them out and indicated that they would pay a lower rate as a sole proprietor. We also received feedback that in the professional six to 15 employee category, as well as the service six to 15 employee category, that there was a sense that the jump from one to five employees up to six to 15 was too much of a step. You know, the step was a little too high, and so we've modified that category as well. And I want to point out that in any case, any rate on this updated fee structure table is less than what would have been paid previously in the, in the noticed version of the fee table. So again, by adding those categories, we've carved out some folks who would pay less, and none of the other properties or businesses would pay more as a result. Next slide, please. Again, just to reiterate that sole proprietor, because that is something new that we're talking about this evening that wasn't on the previous rate structure. It is a business owner who works for themselves with no employees. So, you know, very literally a sole proprietor who's operating a business. And so that tier has been added both for professional and service categories. And then again, the reduction of fees for the professional and service categories for the six to 15 employee tier has been amended in order to address those equity issues based on that feedback from the community. Next slide, please. We also wanted to bring forward and discuss some of the anticipated expenditures. I think it's always important for people to understand what it is this type of charge would be spent on, what the benefits might be of raising this revenue. And the anticipated or planned expenditures would include hiring a full-time executive director to bring more presence and dedicated effort to the downtown, increase the cleaning activities to maximize the benefit to downtown, expanding those marketing, advertising, and publication to increase foot traffic to downtown businesses. Reinvigorating, of course, you know, things went on hold with COVID and so forth, and, you know, trying to get some of those community events, those big, those signature events that the DSMA has put on in the past, reinvigorating those programs, reinvigorating public art programs to help promote local businesses and increase community engagement, advocating for those downtown businesses, and continuing the strong relationship that the DSMA and the businesses have with city council, city manager, and the public works department. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Jennifer to finish up on some of our procedural topics.
Thank you, Sarah. So next steps, if approved, the fees will start July 1st, 2023. Staff will implement the changes in the business tax license over the course of the next three to six months. Council action requested tonight is to introduce the ordinance, adopt the resolution, both as amended.
Thank you very much. I will now bring it to council to see if we have any questions. Not seeing any. I will then go to public comment. Madam Clerk, what public comment do we have?
Mr. Mayor, we do have in-person, one, two, three, four, five public speakers in person. If anyone would like to, in the audience, would like to provide comment on this item, please bring me up a yellow speaker card. And online, I have five hands raised. I will give you a moment to complete raising hands or providing a yellow public speaker Seeing no other speaker slips and no other hands raised, we will start with the in-person public comment and end with our virtual speakers.
Madam Clerk?
Yeah.
Should we go for two minutes each, please?
Yes, sir. Rafat Haddad will be the last speaker, and two minutes each. The first speaker is Louis Pachek.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. In October 18, my wife, who has a beauty salon in downtown San Mateo, received a letter requesting an increase of the fees. Now, after two years of those businesses struggling here, you have a nerve to increase the fees for those businesses. Where you been? Half of the businesses in San Mateo are losing because they cannot make it. I object to all the increase of the downtown. Downtown Association was created in 1986. In 1986, I had a business downtown. Forty-five years later, we don't see any improvement. Where is the improvement in downtown? Look at the other cities. Look at San Carlos. Look at Burlingame. They created a good downtown environment for the people to come spend money. Here is, the objective are, we advertise. What did you advertise? We never see anything. I sold my business in 1990. From that point on, 45 years... From that point on, 45 years, there is no improvement. I suggest that this be, the last time they have a hearing on this increase was five years ago. It was tabled for five years. I suggest you table it for another five years. Businesses cannot afford today to do that. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. The next speaker is Heather Cleary. Following Heather Cleary, it's Andrew Crisot.
Good evening again. Uh, not only am I the vice chair of the Chamber of Commerce, I'm also the CEO of Peninsula Family Service, a nonprofit who operates downtown. Um, on behalf of PFS, we are very, very supportive of the work, um, of raising the rates to improve the downtown area. We believe that with that can come more, um, customers and that will create more jobs, which our clients need. For my chamber hat, we have talked to a number of businesses downtown and they are all supportive. They believe that every dollar is very important right now. Um, so do not take those dollars lightly. But we need the investment in our downtown, in our clean streets, and bringing more people, creating more festivals and having more activity downtown. So we are very supportive of this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
One last thing, a vibrant downtown will also clear the empty buildings. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Andrew Gesal.
Yeah, I'd like to, my wife is, uh, she pays a fee a year for a business license, okay? You guys, she, we've just gone through three years of COVID. Her business has dropped off 30 to 40% over that period of time. Now, you guys come up with a proposition to raise fees. Why don't you let us get caught up a little bit? Instead of raising fees on business owners, why don't you let people park for free so they can come to downtown San Mateo and not have to worry about paying for parking or going to find a meter to put money into? You know, you talked about earlier today, we talked about aging people and their inability or their ability to be cared for. Well, a lot of her clients, my wife's clients are elderly, and they can't figure out how to pay for parking. She has to go out to help them pay for parking. And if they're off by two or three minutes. Today I was in her parking lot, uh, waiting, I was going to get lunch, and there were three people giving out tickets in that parking lot. There, you, you, if you want to bring more people to downtown San Mateo, stop charging for parking, an exorbitant fee for parking. She has to pay $40 a month for her to park, and typically she has to park two, three blocks away. That's $480 a year that she has to pay for parking. Why can't business owners not pay for parking? She pays a fee to you guys every year for a business license. Why is it that business, people who have a business license have to pay for parking? Why, why are we, they getting hit with these exorbitant fees that shouldn't be? At this point in time, this is ridiculous. I mean, seriously, 30 to 40% less business over a period of the last three years. And she still paid her rent every month. She pays her health insurance every month, which by the way is $1,600 a month. I mean, you guys are imposing fees.
Mr. Geoso, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Susan Yu, followed by Robert Anderson.
Hi, I've had a business here in San Mateo for 37 years. I've always paid my fee and I.
Could please, please speak into the microphone.
I'm sorry, I've, and I've, I've had a business for 37 years in downtown San Mateo. I actually stayed at the Ben Franklin Court 42 years ago and was, and I loved the area, so I decided to open a business here, which I did. And I've always paid my fee. COVID was tough. Thank you for letting us pay half the fee during COVID. But, um, I am on the Downtown San Mateo Association Board, and I recognize the need for us to have an executive director so that we can promote downtown San Mateo to bring in more businesses, more customers, and to make it a more vibrant area for our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Robert Anderson.
Good evening, council members. Uh, my name is Robert Anderson. Um, as you know, I am on the DSMA board for the past nine years. I've also, uh, was president of the organization for two years. When I was here last month, I happened to mention, uh, how important it was to have a full-time executive director for many reasons. Uh, tonight, I just want to take a minute about, talking about some accomplishments of the DSMA to downtown San Mateo and to the city of San Mateo. The DSMA has formed a long-time partnership with the city of San Mateo, and also has been very proactive in addressing frontline issues in downtown. I'll just give a few examples. If you go back 15 years ago, what was the big complaint among a lot of merchants in downtown? It was, uh, the homeless situation. We had about 28 to 30 homeless that were living in downtown San Mateo. And, uh, as you know, I was part of, uh, the homeless outreach team. However, I can tell you, having been part of it, the Downtown San Mateo Association was a partner. They were part of the oversight committee and they were integral, uh, part of the homeless outreach team program. And as we know, we got those 28 to 30 homeless people off the street. Parking in downtown San Mateo has been a long issue. Um, even though there's about 3,000 parking spaces in downtown San Mateo. Um, people who come to downtown, trying to find a place to park, they are unaware of where to park. So the DSMA met with, uh, Public Works and we came up with some, uh, ways to resolve it with the new, uh, signs that posted up and the various digital readouts of the, uh, parking allotment as far as, uh, how much was free. Um, we have also been very much involved in, uh, the downtown cleanup and keeping it clean. And as, as, as you all know, my time is about up, but I do support, I think the downtown San Mateo merchants got bang for their buck. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert.
Next speaker virtually is Opal.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Colleen Rafferty. I am co-owner of Christensen and Rafferty Fine Jewelry in San Mateo. Downtown San Mateo is the heart of our city and region. And having a healthy heart is essential to having strong cities and regions. Downtown is an important community space where members of all segments of the community can meet equally for community events, music, the arts, and alike. A strong downtown makes your city somewhere people want to live. A strong downtown provides culture and lifestyle choices that retain people. A strong downtown is your city's gathering place where we go to support each other. A strong contingent of businesses on any city or town's main street is absolutely a key part of a healthy and vibrant community. I have been a business owner in downtown San Mateo for 27 years, and I have worked in downtown San Mateo for 49 years. I am speaking this evening to express my full support for the new fee structure proposed by the Downtown Association. I thank you for your time and good evening.
Thank you. The, uh, next speaker is Heather Ann.
Good evening. My name is Heather Ann. I am the owner of Siren Song Enterprises on Baldwin Avenue. Um, I'm happy to pay fees. I'm happy to pay taxes, and I am gratified to learn that the fee schedule has been shifted. Um, because for myself as a sole proprietor, it was looking at almost doubling of my fees, which would have frankly hurt. But my greatest concern is that, um, the Downtown San Mateo Association is a private, as far as I can tell, 501(c)(6), and I am unclear as to why it is directing and receiving taxpayer funds to support its activities or to be in charge of these matters, which seem to be municipal. Um, I'm particularly concerned because in my new view on this, I, please disabuse me if I'm, I'm wrong, but there's no public control or oversight, no choice to participate, um, if this group is, is not actually a city agency. Um, and that is my concern. Uh, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jonathan Stone.
Good evening, Mayor Benia and City of San Mateo council members. My name is Jonathan Stone with Prometheus Real Estate Group. We're a property owner and business owner based here in San Mateo. I'm calling in tonight following up on the letter we submitted in support of this matter. We strongly believe it is important for the DSMA to continue to be able to provide services, support business in the downtown, and to ensure a strong, clean, and safe environment. Opposed fee structure ensures the viability of the DSMA and provides additional funding required for enhancement and expansion of services. We encourage you to move forward with the decision to update the fee structure. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ann Kenny.
Hi, this is, my name is Ann Kenny and I am a third-generation Samitan and, um, have been involved in our family business in San Mateo and been involved in the chamber, worked on activities with the DSMA such as the Wine Walk. I participated in all of those activities. But I have a couple of concerns about this fee structure, this new fee structure for DSMA, because there's still a lot of recovery happening from COVID that, um, businesses have felt, and we've seen it in the empty storefronts that have been, have, uh, come up all over the city. The other thing that concerns me is that the DSMA has this, one of their charters is to be helping clean up the downtown. But I continue as a frequent, uh, shopper and visitor to downtown to not see the most basic thing happen, which is cleaning the sidewalks, cleaning the, the, um, public garages, things like this don't, and that they are supposed to be, I think, under the DSMA's purview, and they are not being delivered on. Yet you're asking members of the DSMA to pay even more money. And my last concern has to do with the amount of commercial rental space that's available in downtown San Mateo. A good example is Snowflake, which used to be in downtown. They renovated the Mills Square building and now Snowflake is over at 92 in Delaware. So those people are no longer paying any of the fees for DSMA. And I, I'm very concerned about all the commercial office space that's available, given the change in working habits, being able to be rented out and then be able to contribute to DSMA. And I think that it would be good to stick with the DSMA's current fee schedule in order to keep tenants in town.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Thank you. And our last speaker is Rafat Haddad.
Hello, hi. Uh, my name is Rafat Haddad. I am a resident of San Mateo and a business owner of Three Bees Coffee on Third Avenue. Um, I support the proposal of the Downtown San Mateo Association. Um, as, um, I was, uh, starting business 20 years ago and, um, I stayed in the business for about a year or two, uh, knowing nothing except for downtown San Mateo. Uh, I paid the fees, um, until I got involved with the DSMA and I learned a lot from the Downtown Association. Uh, and it helped me throughout the 20 years, uh, basically, uh, improving my business and looking out for the downtown. And, um, so the proposal, basically, uh, it helps the businesses, uh, having the DSMA involved in terms of cleaning, uh, creating events, and, um, having the knowledge of what things go around in the downtown. Um, uh, one other thing is B Street. I think there is a big potential for, uh, B Street to have multiple events, and I think Downtown, uh, Semitae Association, uh, would be a great, um, candidate to take on that task and help out with the city. I know the city has been doing a great job, um, uh, do, you know, having the, the, the street closed and maybe having, uh, more and better plans for the future. So I think, uh, the proposal would be a big help for the DSMA to continue the work that they have been doing for the past many years. And I, I'm done with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, we have no other speakers.
Thank you very much. Then I'm gonna close, public comment period, and bring it back to the council. Um, what additional questions or comments may we have? Council member Rodriguez.
All right, thank you. Um, my, my, my comments are, echo, um, pretty much a, a lot of what I said last time when we were first talking about this. I, I'm very, very supportive of these changes. I think they're long overdue. I think that what the DSMA has done on a shoestring budget has been, um, impressive and is commendable, uh, should be commended. But my, my support on this, um, definitely rests, we'll use a, we'll use the HCD's phrase. Um, I want to see a heightened commitment to tangible success metrics so that we can track the progress and ensure accountability for the wise use of the increased fees. So it's not only, uh, not only the success metrics, but our efforts to measure the success. If we just continue how we have been in the past where every year, um, we, we said, well, this is what we said we were gonna do. Did we do it? Yes, no, maybe. Um, then, then it just keeps on going. I really think we need to, we need to have surveys. We need to have, um, polling all the businesses that are, that are paying this and seeing, are they seeing improvements? Are we doing a good job? Um, that, one of the public speakers, um, who talked about accountability, um, it really rang true for me. I don't know the difference between the different nonprofits, but, but these are using taxpayers' funds. Things like street cleanliness, um, it doesn't, doesn't just affect businesses. It affects everybody in San Mateo and affects neighboring cities as well. So, um, I'm really excited about this. I think it's a opportunity to, to really take our downtown to a next level. And that coupled with our, our new pedestrian plaza. Um, I think that the, the, our, our downtown has, has started off at the top and really hit some tough times over the decades. And right now, I think it's, it's right back, uh, it's, it's coming into vogue again at just the right time, and it's a real treasure for our city. And I'm really, I think this is a, a step, a, a very important step in the right direction. It's gonna, to help us fulfill its unfulfilled potential, so.
Okay, thank you. Um, one thing, I did want to ask a question because I've heard mention of DSMA using taxpayer funds a couple of times now. Uh, could city manager please clarify that?
The DSMA is funded by the assessment, so.
Not taxpayer money.
Not taxpayer money.
Thank you very much. Um, who has additional questions, comments? Council member Lee?
I heard a couple of questions, just, I, I was hoping the city manager or city attorney could, could elaborate a little bit more so that the public understands the structure of the assessment and, um, and the, the, why the entity exists, and then the role of the council in terms of oversight.
So I'll start, but, uh, the, this whole structure is, is, can you, can you hear me now? Is that better? So the structure.
I have a problem hearing, so if you speak better into the microphone, it's better for me.
Okay, understood. So under state law, um, state law authorizes, uh, city councils to, um, provide for the assessment of businesses in order for associations like the Downtown Association to then use those assessments for the betterment of those businesses in that area. It has to be supported by a study. It has to, what has to be explained is how those assessments are going to be used and that they're being used for the benefit of those businesses, excuse me, being, being assessed and in proportion to, uh, the, the benefit that they receive.
Great. And then, um, in terms of, maybe Jennifer, you want to elaborate on? And then in terms of, maybe Jennifer, you want to elaborate on the, you know, the way that the efforts of DSMA comes back to council for, under, you know, for reports and input?
So, annually, the DSMA has to return to City Council on what they've done and what they're going to do with their plans, and each year council approves the assessment of their levy. So, if they don't meet their goals or their plans, the council does not have to agree to assess the levy or can even reduce the levy for that year if they wish.
Great. I have one more.
Anything else?
Yes. And then, and then I think that's also really important to just kind of step back and review for all of us, what were some of the efforts of the DSMA to provide support to businesses downtown during the pandemic?
I feel like that's better answered by Lou.
Mayor, council members. So, when it became apparent that we were closed down, we knew that things were going to be tough, you know, obviously with no income, businesses were going to be hard-pressed to pay the fees, you know, no matter what they were, and we moved to have the council agree to have our fees during COVID.
To cut them in half.
Correct.
Thank you.
And so, we did that, and also it's important to note that, you know, we all know inflation's in the news, and our costs are not going down. Everything we do costs more money. Our cleaners are, you know, have gone through the roof, and our fees haven't gone up in ages. And really.
And how about your salary, Lou? I wanted to ask you about that. And how about your salary?
My salary? It's a lot. It's kind of embarrassing, actually. Mayor, it's like zero.
And other board members, their salary?
We are not paid.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. I probably have about, I don't know, seven, eight thousand hours in the last four years invested in the DSMA as a volunteer. And in addition, it's important that the motivation behind this really was to bring equity to this fee structure, and that's what this new fee structure does, because companies like, I think one of the speakers talked about, Snowflake, you know, with all their money and all their employees, they were paying $100 a year, $100 a year, and really this was about bringing equity to all the businesses downtown. So, we're on a.
Do you think that's why they left and moved to the other location?
The $100?
Yeah.
That's possible.
Possible.
Anything else?
Well, and I think, I would just add, you know, as someone who attends the DSMA meetings, that during the pandemic, if your business was not directly benefiting from the collective effort to help businesses avail themselves of the pandemic resources, the PPP program, the Small Business Grant Program, the, you know, the way that the DSMA helped mobilize to support businesses through the street closure, the Parklet Program, the outdoor dining program, I think we created 30,000 square feet of outdoor dining space during the pandemic that didn't exist prior. So, I think, you know, there's many aspects to the work of the DSMA, the partnership between the DSMA and the Chamber that deserves a lot of credit, that has supported businesses to recover during, to survive during the pandemic and build back in, through a recovery process. And all of that happened through volunteer hours, dedicated, dedicated community members like Lou and Robert Anderson and Heather Cleary and so many others. So, I cannot overstate the way that the DSMA has helped support our economic vitality downtown. It cannot be overstated because we would not have even remotely close to the downtown that we have today without their efforts. So, I'll move into comments since I'm talking already. Is that okay?
Well, let's see if other members have any questions, any questions?
So, I just want to make a comment because the comparison came up with respect to Burlingame, and Burlingame has what they call a business owners improvement district, a P-Bid, right? And we don't have that in San Mateo. And that has led in Burlingame to some really wonderful hardscapes and wide sidewalks that you can dine on and all those lovely things. We don't have that here, and most of what the DSMA attends to, if you will, is a lot of maintenance. There aren't capital improvements that come with this assessment. It's mostly maintenance to keep what we have going, and that has taken money, and it will take some additional money, especially if you haven't had an increase in 10 years and you were at 50% levels during COVID. So, I'm definitely in supportive of the increase in fees, but I just wanted to point out that there are differences in districts that you can create. San Mateo does not have one. San Mateo has a lot more owners downtown than Burlingame. Burlingame is a very small group of owners who very much came together to do a P-Bid. That has not happened in San Mateo to date. It's not to say it can happen, it just has not happened to date. So, most of what we're looking at is maintaining what we have, and I can appreciate that that has certainly gone up in value, and I very much appreciate the equity concerns, because there are small businesses here that were paying more than big users of downtown, and they should be paying more. So, thank you for the effort to put all this together, and whenever you're ready, I'd certainly make the motion.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Okay, then we're going to go to the public, oh, we did the public comments. We're back. Final comments, final comments, a motion. It's the council's pleasure.
Go ahead, please, if you would like to. Go ahead.
So, I'll just wrap up my, you know, my comments. I do appreciate Councilmember Rodriguez's point about wanting to have metrics and surveys and higher levels of accountability, and I think that that will naturally come through dedicated professionalization of the organization. And I also would like to encourage the organization as it develops to look at building its capacity in a way that's complementary to the city and the Chamber and try to assess any potential redundancies or optimize any efficiencies that can be found. I mean, I think that there, you know, there's, I think that each organization plays an important role, and I've all, I've said repeatedly, I wish that there was another Jennifer Chen. And so, I think that, you know, getting the DSMA and Executive Director gives us that possibility. I also think, you know, just from, you know, from an efficiency standpoint, an optimization standpoint, I would like us to be thinking about the organizational structures so that we're really focusing the very limited resources on the acute needs of the business community. And there's another point that I think is worth mentioning. When we look at the zones, Zone 1 and Zone 2, I think one of the points from businesses in Zone 2 is that they haven't necessarily seen equitable distribution of resources in Zone 2. And I think that there may be ways to better evaluate the needs of Zone 2 and make sure that that allocation is fair, and so that anyone, everyone who's paying into the assessment feels the direct benefits. And then lastly, you know, just to return to the point about organizational capacity and keeping a very clear perspective on the need, I hear over and over again, you know, I live right next to downtown, and I frequent downtown very often, the needs that I hear from businesses are around homelessness, about sanitation, about wanting to activate the space and have events. And I think that there's also a really important role that the organization can play in their advocacy piece. Things like ideas from the community members tonight that were talking about, you know, are there discounted business parking passes? Like, is that something that should be explored? Is there, you know, the idea that Lou had about bringing a bathroom downtown closer to Caltrain, right? Or helping pool resources for businesses that have been, you know, have been the recipients of those predatory ADA lawsuits? There are many ways that DSMA, I think, has so much potential to serve the needs downtown. And I think that what I hear from the people that have concerns is that they want to make sure that they're getting their money's worth because every dollar counts so much. And I certainly hear that, and I think that we want to be rest assured that as we, or as personally I will pass, you know, I will vote to support this, that I will also be a voice to hold higher standards and more, and make sure that there is a high level of accountability and very fruitful partnerships moving forward.
Okay. Thank you. So, I think we have, if we're ready, a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll make a motion.
There's a motion right here.
Oh, I'll second.
Okay. Madam Claire Korea, the roll call, please.
Before you call the roll, can I just make one clarification?
Sure.
So, is the motion to introduce the ordinance and adopt a resolution as amended? That's as presented by staff?
As you have stated. That is the motion?
Exactly.
Okay.
Second.
Third.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Pappan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Gofos?
Yes.
Mayor Bonilla?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Now, we're on to item 16. I need my glasses for this. Draft Goals, Policies, and Actions for the Land Use, Community Design, and Historic
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the City Council. Zach Dahl, Deputy Director with the City's Community Development Department. This item before you, which is part two of our Draft Goals, Policies, and Actions for the City's General Plan Update, is being brought before you for review and direction. Before we get started, I did want to acknowledge the staff team as well as consultant team that is supporting this multi-year effort, starting with our core team made up of staff members from Community Development and Public Works Engineering. We also have a technical advisory committee that includes staff members from all of the city departments and SMC Fire, and then our consultant team, which is led by Placeworks. I also want to note that the second half of the presentation will be presented by Joanna Jansen, Principal with Placeworks, the Lead Consultant for the General Plan Update. For tonight's agenda, following presentation, we staff will be available for any clarifying questions, receive public comment, and then move to council discussion and direction. And for tonight's meeting specifically, we are looking at three elements within the General Plan Update, our land use element, our community design and historic resources element, and our safety element. And ultimately, after receiving comment and discussion, we are looking for direction on the goals, policies, and actions for these three elements. Did also want to highlight the format that the draft goals, policies, and actions are in within your agenda. You can see in attachments six through eight, we have those draft GOPAs for each of the three elements before you, and then in italics and track changes as we've gone through the community engagement process, the General Plan Subcommittee and Planning Commission, we have come up with a variety of recommendations and modifications to update various policies, actions, and some of the goals within each element, and those are highlighted for your discussion and are part of staff's recommendation here this evening for your consideration. To provide a brief project overview before we jump into each of the three elements, the General Plan Update started with its vision statement. This was developed at the front end of the process and includes the five core values, and this really forms the underpinning for the overall general plan that is moving forward. In terms of where we are at with our schedule, we are at the end of our Goals, Policies, and Action phase of the project and about to transition into preparation and publication of our draft general plan as well as our environmental impact report that goes with it, with an ultimate target of having a general plan that's ready for council adoption by the end of 2023. Just a brief overview of the elements that go into the general plan, starting with the land use element, we have a total of eight, but noting that housing, which was discussed earlier this evening, is being prepared separately because of state requirements for deadlines. In addition to those eight elements, we also do have an introduction, appendices, glossary, and other elements, including an implementation plan that support the overall general plan. I did also want to highlight the community outreach and engagement effort that was completed as part of our Goals, Policies, and Action phase. This effort started at the end of July when the draft GOPAs were published, and it started with mailing out of a citywide newsletter with information about the General Plan Update as well as resources and information about upcoming events. And then you can see we had a variety of pop-ups, workshops, and an open house through August and through the end of September. And then we do have a map that shows various locations around the city of where these events took place, whether they were pop-ups, open houses, or workshops. In particular, we did want to highlight that we did make positive progress in reaching some of our harder-to-reach segments of the population, and that includes, for this phase of outreach, we saw an increase from 19% to 30% of participants who were renters, and we also saw an increase in participation from residents of color, our low-income households, and then also we did see an increase in our younger demographics in participating in this phase as well. So, that was really encouraging, and what it does illustrate is that as we've been doing these events from the beginning of the General Plan Update effort until now, we are learning from what we've done, and we're focusing on areas of success and input we've heard from the community about how we can better and more effectively engage. Specifically highlighting what we accomplished over this past community engagement phase, this included the citywide mailer, an online survey with over 220 participants, 14 pop-up events, two workshops, and one open house, and then we also did present to two community groups. Along with that, we had three meetings before our General Plan Subcommittee, two meetings with our Planning Commission, and then we're looking at our second meeting here before you this evening. And then also wanted to highlight the future opportunities where the council will have a chance to engage in this discussion as we move toward completing the general plan effort. This includes a Measure Y discussion in a study session format anticipated next winter or spring, three meetings before the City Council to discuss the draft general plan, and then two adoption hearings near the end of '23. So, at this point, I would like to turn it over to Joanna Jansen, Principal with Placeworks, who will walk you through the draft goals, policies, and actions for the three elements before us this evening.
Great. Thank you so much, Zach. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm delighted to be with you virtually. I'm Joanna Jansen from Placeworks, the Lead Consultant on the General Plan Update Effort. I want to just briefly talk about goals, policies, and actions, and before we talk about the specific elements that we're focusing on tonight, and I know that this is your second of two meetings, so I don't want to belabor any of this, but just briefly to orient anybody who's new to this process this evening, we're going to be talking about goals, policies, and actions tonight. A goal describes the general desired result. A policy is a regulation or a rule that will guide city decision-making, and an action is a measure or a procedure or something that staff and/or others, including other agents. agencies, will do, actions we will take to reach the goal and to implement the policies. The next slide, just a note about how we got to the draft goals, policies, and actions that you're considering tonight. We started from a review of the existing general plan, and we revised those based on input from staff as well as changes in state law. Now we're circulating those to the community, the general plan subcommittee, planning commission, and council to get your feedback, and we're going to use all that feedback, we've already begun to use that feedback, as you can see in your attachments, to start to make changes based on the final set of comments that we hear tonight. We plan to pull all of the input together into the draft general plan that will be shared early next year. So moving on to the specific elements that we're talking about tonight, the first of these is land use. The first topic that I want to highlight in land use is environmental justice. As you know, this is a new legal requirement for general plans in California in places where there are what state law calls disadvantaged communities and what we in the San Mateo general plan are calling equity priority community, consistent with language used by ABAG and MTC and elsewhere in the Bay Area. These are places in California communities where we see a combination of a high pollution burden and low socioeconomic outcomes such as income, educational attainment, English as a first language, and so those households and families living with that combination of disadvantages also see often very significant disparities in negative health outcomes and other life outcomes. So the state law is aimed at identifying places that are experiencing this combined set of negative impacts, and then focusing general plan policies and actions on improving conditions in those areas. Based on mapping at the state level, that looks at about 20 different indicators, we can, have identified North Central, as you can see on the map on the right hand of this screen, as an equity priority community in San Mateo, and so we're naming that in the general plan. The general plan also leaves open the possibility that now or in the future, the city, based on changing conditions, the city may identify additional equity priority communities. Specifically within those communities, at a minimum, we need to address pollution exposure, air quality, equitable access to public facilities, healthy food, safe and sanitary homes, and opportunities for physical activity, and we also need to make sure that we're taking an extra step to engage these communities which have experienced past disinvestment in public decision-making and to prioritize improvements there to improve conditions. Second topic to address in the land use element is this question of jobs housing fit. I know that this has come up multiple times in our general plan process. It came up for you earlier tonight in your discussions of the housing element. What I, as a planner, really like to focus on is the fit of a job to an employed resident. I know we often talk about this in shorthand as jobs to housing, but housing, a housing unit can host many different combinations of individuals, and so to me, it seems more straightforward to compare a job to a person who's employed. Of course, there's also many people in the population of San Mateo who are not part of the workforce. They might be students, they might be retired, they might be choosing not to work, and so to look at people who are employed and compare those to the number of jobs. Currently, in 2019, the most recent data we have available, the ratio in San Mateo was 1.07 jobs to employed resident. That indicates a relatively close numeric match of those two categories, but of course, there also could still be a mismatch of the type or quality of the job. It's also certainly true right now in San Mateo that the majority of residents leave San Mateo to work, and the majority of people who come into San Mateo to work who come to, from outside of the city. We only have about 12% of employed residents who both live and work in San Mateo. So we have tried to be responsive to past comments about the need to really focus on and improve this fit by increasing housing densities in the general plan in order for folks who are service workers and other workers at the lower end of the wage scale to be able to have affordable housing options in San Mateo. We want to facilitate and support the production of housing at all income levels, including the lower and middle income residents. We also want to protect current residents to prevent their displacement for the folks who are already living here, and support good-paying local jobs and employment opportunities. The next slide just kind of graphically illustrates what I just talked about in terms of the number of people coming into and going out of San Mateo every day. Again, this is based on 2018 data. We don't, as you know, in recent years, this data has changed significantly, but this is the pattern that we have seen for many years in the past. So just to get a little bit more specific about some of the existing and proposed policies regarding jobs housing fit, I'm not going to read all of these to you, but we just wanted to highlight that the land use element that you're considering, the goal policies and actions include actions to review new development to track numbers of housing units and jobs that have been being proposed on a yearly basis. Getting and maintaining clear data about this has been a challenge throughout the process, so this action would help to address that, as well as policies about housing diversity, local employment, and an action to develop programs to improve the jobs-to-resident match. We're also proposing to add some new policies about maintaining a reasonable balance between potential job generation and the local job market to improve the jobs-to-housing fit. And then also wanted to just point out the commercial linkage fee. This is something the city already has in place, but this would be a policy to both maintain and keep that fee updated, and to use those fees to support the creation and preservation of affordable housing. That's the current purpose of the fee, but this would kind of enshrine that in the general plan and make sure that that fee is continued, because that fee is one of the clearest instruments that the city already is using to link jobs and non-residential development with the increased need for housing that that development triggers. So wanted to just touch on those topics because I know those have been of interest to the council in the past. Returning back to the draft goals, policies, and actions that you have, this slide just lists the topics by which the land use element is organized. So we cover balanced, orderly, and equitable growth and preservation, diverse range of land uses, focused planning areas, environmental justice, community engagement, climate change and sustainability, a sustainable economy, development review, regional cooperation, and general plan maintenance. Briefly, wanted to, of course, touch on the draft land use map. That's not part of what we're covering tonight, and we had a multi-year alternatives process to arrive at the draft land use map. That's, of course, going to be a very important part of the draft element when the element is published in its entirety as part of the draft general plan. This is how the map is shaping up as we combine the outcomes of the preferred scenario process in the 10 study areas with the existing general plan land use map outside of those study areas, and we have also made some adjustments to ensure that no unintentional downzoning is happening as a result of these updated designations that we considered through the alternatives process. As we've gone through the process of sharing these goals, policies, and actions publicly, we've heard from the community an interest in increasing densities near transit, prioritizing residential uses as a part of mixed-use projects, again, something that's already come up this evening, while also encouraging retail and neighborhood-serving uses that folks can walk to and access conveniently, interest in both reducing building heights and increasing building heights, especially near transit, and persistent calls for continuing to increase community engagement. In the last section of this presentation, we just have several slides here that list the feedback that we received from the general plan subcommittee, the GPS, and from the planning commission. Again, we're not planning to go through each one of these. You do have this as your agenda report, but just wanted to note that these are here in case it's helpful to return back to them during a discussion. So the second element on our agenda tonight is the community design and historic resources element. Wanted to start off by just acknowledging that in addition, the city is also going through the process right now to develop objective design standards with target for those being ready for adoption in the summer or fall of 2023, this coming year. Those are going to focus on mixed-use and multifamily projects, and they will replace adopted design guidelines and the specific plan design controls that are not objective. The process obviously is including its own set of community engagement efforts, and we are closely coordinating the general plan policies that are related to the desired design and character with the ongoing objective design standards work. Following the adoption of the mixed-use and multifamily projects, the objective design standards, city anticipates preparation of objective design standards for single-family residential projects in the future. So the topics covered in the community design and historic preservation element include natural landscapes and the urban forest, historic resources, city image, residential development types, mixed-use and commercial development types, and then potentially area-specific design policies, although that's something we want to raise with you this evening. From the community, we have heard strong interest in preserving historic resources in San Mateo, balancing historic preservation with the need to provide additional housing, strengthening the city's historic resources policies, maintaining San Mateo's unique character, and providing buffers or transitions between higher-density development and lower-density neighborhoods. Once again, we have slides here that really present the GPS and planning commission recommendations in case you would like to return to those. And then finally, just wanted to close with a brief summary of the safety element. This is another element where we've seen a lot of increases in state law given various disasters and emergencies in California communities in the past several years. The safety element includes emergency readiness and emergency operations, and then it addresses several different types of individual hazards, including geotechnical hazards, flood hazards, sea level rise, wildfire, hazardous materials, and energy supply is currently a part of this element. We have heard from the community that folks are certainly very concerned about sea level rise and see that as something the city really needs to be planning for. The community is interested in ensuring that the grid and local infrastructure can support increased electrical demand, and the city should plan for increased wildlife risk. Again, with this element, we have GPS feedback and planning commission recommendations. And then finally, just wanted to close out my piece of the presentation by just, again, summarizing what we're hoping to accomplish tonight, receive city council comments on these three elements that I've just mentioned in the presentation: land use, community design and historic resources, and safety. This slide has some discussion questions to prompt your comments for council members or viewers, if there's any, you know, more specific comments that you have or very detailed comments. We have an email address of generalplan@cityofsanmateo.org. And then for the council discussion slides, Zach, I just want to hand it back over to you to leave with that.
Great, thank you, Joanna. We did, on this slide, note some specific questions to frame your discussion and input that you provide this evening. Did also want to note that we have received a variety of written correspondence in addition to the verbal. Up until agenda publication, all of those comments are included with your agenda report. For comments, written comments, we've received since publication, we have been forwarding those to you individually, as well as posting those to our public comments section on strive sanmateo.org. Did want to also note there are a number of specific land use requests that have been included with those, and while the land use element is up for discussion tonight, the focus is really on the goals, policies, and actions. Staff is tracking each one of these requests, and during the draft general plan phase, we will have an opportunity for council to, we'll bring all those back and have counsel, give council the opportunity to consider those land use requests on either individual properties or groupings of properties, but that's not necessarily part of the discussion for this evening's meeting, since the land use map isn't really part of what's up for discussion. So with that, that does conclude staff's presentation, and we are available for any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dahl. So let me ask the council, do we have questions on this? Council members?
Just briefly, I think you addressed one of the issues that came up. We got a letter from one neighborhood regarding the land use map, and so I think you were preventing us from going down that road, but that's not something we're necessarily going to discuss, but in the future, the council could take a look at that specific neighborhood that we're talking about?
Yeah, that is the goal. As we get these requests, we'll keep track of them, and then we'll tee them up for a proper discussion to allow council to weigh in to decide if these points merit any changes to the land use map, but I know there are some themes to that that include like transitions to, from higher-density areas to neighborhoods, and that type of concept does exist in various policies and actions, so if you wanted to speak to that within the land use element, I think that would be appropriate, but the specific land use that they're raising, we would want to save that for another meeting.
Okay, and that's, the area that we're talking about was a letter we received from a neighborhood right next to Ace Hardware on Delaware, right?
Yes, that kind of is the northern corner area of the downtown study area, and as it transitions from the edge into the adjacent neighborhood area.
Thank you.
Other questions? Councilmember Lee?
Hey, Zach. I hope this doesn't come off as a little bit of a pop quiz, but I think for the benefit of the community, when we frame the need, I was hoping you could share some data points in terms of how we think about the housing crisis, how we quantify the housing crisis, and how it's impacted the community. And so I wanted to ask, between 2010 and 2020, home prices increased by, you know, do you have an estimate of what percentage?
I don't know for housing prices.
Okay, it was 115%, and rental prices increased 74%. And do you have a sense of how, you know, how many households in the city of San Mateo are cost-burdened?
I do not.
Nearly half of all renter households in the city of San Mateo are cost-burdened, and that means that they spend more than 30% of their gross income on the housing costs alone, and actually, one in four, so that's 25% of renters, are extremely cost-burdened, spending more than 50% of their gross income on housing costs. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Deputy Mayor Pappen?
Mine relates to the sea level rise, and question slash comment, really, but I would like to see, I know there are building construction standards that we could impose that would make sure that properties that are vulnerable were fortified, you know, for example, they were built, you know, so much above the shoreline and whatnot, and one of the things that I didn't see in there, but I'd like to see added, would be also perhaps a certain fee that could be charged if you want to build along the water that contributes to the cost of fortifying perhaps the shoreline as well. So not only do we require that you make your own structure fortified against the sea level rise, but perhaps if we have to do something along the water, we have some fees that would contribute to that. So I didn't see anything financially, and I just want to throw that in there. Did I miss something? I don't think so.
No, whether that is best in the general plan or one of, the first action under the sea level rise topic is the city would move forward with preparing a comprehensive adaptation plan, which really, the goal of it would be to bring all of our policies that are sea level rise-related into one document, similar to kind of a climate action plan, and then that way, something like a fee could be assessed. I know there's a variety of other policies or programs that could go in. Putting them all within the adaptation plan, I think, is the most comprehensive way to look at sea level rise and how the city responds, so maybe that would be the most appropriate place for it, but we could definitely explore including it into the general plan if that was direction provided.
Yeah, I mean, I just want to see something related to money. And just one more comment, if I may, through the, that a lot of that work, as you know, is being done by the One Shoreline District, so I just caution at this point... So I just caution at this point that the city might not have to do all the work in the, in the context of a comprehensive plan, because some of those plans might be done on one shoreline, and they actually cross city boundaries as well. So I know we'll work together.
Thank you. Anybody else have questions? I don't have any questions. I'd be happy to go ahead to public comment now, Madam Clerk, if we could.
Yes, I have right now three in-person public comment slips. If anyone else would like to comment on this item, please bring me up a yellow public speaking slip. In the virtual environment, I have one hand raised. If we could, if you could raise your hand now, if you intend to comment on the general plan, that would be great. I'll give you a moment to do that. So, Mr. Mayor, I see a couple of in-person attendees filling out yellow slips. I'm going to state we probably have five in-person and two virtual, so seven speakers.
Thank you.
Oh, three, three virtual.
Yep, three, three virtual.
And at this time, we'll get the other two in-person yellow slips coming up, and our three speakers online. The last speaker will be Pamela Riddlemeier.
Very good. Let's get, give each one three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first speaker is Lisa Diaz Nash.
Good evening, everyone, and thanks to city staff for all the work and community outreach you put into the general plan. I want to share comments from neighbors I've spoken with in many parts of San Mateo as to what they'd like to see in the general plan to make it even stronger within the context of existing state law. San Mateans want San Mateo to embrace the future, be more inclusive, and bounce back from the pandemic. They understand the need for growth and the imperative of fighting climate change. But they want our general plan and its underlying policies and actions to be filled with enough detail and realistic expectations so that we can succeed rather than creating bold visions that fall flat. People generally agree with concentrating growth along the transit corridors, but they want to see the plans for how there will be sufficient water, electricity, public transit, open space, affordable workforce housing, emergency services, and on, to ensure we successfully transition those sections of San Mateo into vibrant communities that can support residents' needs, create greater customer traffic for small businesses, and enable people to leave their cars at home. People are concerned with the impact that projected growth will have on traffic and safety, but don't see plans to alleviate their concerns. They want to see that we're planning for the transition, not just the end game. People are engaged and eager to reduce carbon emissions, but they want more outreach ahead of time. And with the emphasis ahead of time to create solid mitigation plans, train the workers, produce the electricity locally, cover the transition costs, and not just be told there's lots of money available. Neighbors are also concerned about the push, as we've heard earlier tonight, for multipurpose developments without required minimum residential and retail percentages. They also want future buildings to take advantage of modern design advances while incorporating objective design standards that spotlight the historic elements that set San Mateo apart. Staff knows this and is working to address it. But with the pace of review of new development projects, will these efforts achieve their goals, or will they be too late? I look forward to San Mateo's general plan that emphasizes not only its goals, but also the detailed policies and actions that will enable us to reach those goals and be proud of our collective achievement. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ken Abrou. And if you are filling out a yellow speaker slip, please bring that to me now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Again, Ken Abrou, long-term resident, and again, representing the Sierra Club Sustainable Land Use Committee. And we sent you guys a letter on these about a month or so ago. So I'll just try to hit some key comments out of this. One is on the land use goal. As we talked about today earlier on the housing element, needs to be made stronger. We can't be just talking about encouraging to meet these affordable housing requirements. We've got to make a strong commitment, and we should tighten up and strengthen our goals in that area. Similarly, on, that's goal number one on the land use. Then there's the land use policy 1-3, which is on the mixed use development. And we should definitely have a very strong requirement there for a significant portion of that development to be for residential. Right now, it's very vague. It could be almost nothing, and we need to make sure it's covering for housing as well. Another thing I think that was really good, and I think there's a lot of good things that the staff did in there, and I think that it was just discussed quite a bit, is that this jobs housing fit, that's really the right metric to be looking at. I know there was some discussion from councilmember Pappan and Lee about different ways of looking at it, but the job housing fit is really the problem. We have so many folks that have to work in San Mateo that can't afford to live here, and so on. And so we have to look at that metric, and I think you guys have got a good job of getting a start at that, and that's great. The other thing I think was really good was the commercial linkage fee and using that as a tool to help us move forward. That should also be strengthened. Again, so as I talked about in the housing element, if we're going to solve this problem and we're part of the solution on a regional basis, we need to take strong action. We can't, and I think as Lisa just said, we can't just have great goals. We've got to show we can actually implement it. The other one I would emphasize was, was goal 13, and I think that needs to be made stronger, too. That pertains to making it, reducing the costs and the time to develop affordable housing. Affordable housing is really the big component we're missing. It's very hard to develop. And again, we have to roll up our sleeves and figure out ways to do that. Again, I'll support what, what Ms. Nash said. We'd have to roll up our sleeves and get into the details of how do we actually get more affordable housing built and not just talk about it. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Sean Farrenbrooke.
Sean Farrenbrooke, District 1. So there was one vague comment in the plan that caught my eye. It was the protecting residents from displacement or something to this effect. I'm not sure of the exact comment. And the reason I'm speaking is, I believe I also heard, this is the last night where comments are recorded as part of the general plan, if I heard that statement correctly. So the comment was also made that renters are very cost pressured right now, and so are landlords, and so are homeowners. And when I hear a comment like that, that's very vague, as, you know, basically protecting displaced residents, I guess I just have to stand up and just be the, the ogre of San Mateo and say, look, we're all suffering. But if this is a backdoor and just say, hey, we're going to have some rent control or language that basically puts rent control as a, a goal for the, the plan, I, I think this needs to be made loud and clear that this is what the intent of this council is because this, I think this needs to, you know, say this loud and clear, because I'm very against it. Right now, for example, if you're buying, if you're taking up a $2 million mortgage, between the mortgage and the property tax, you're going to be paying $11,000 a month. You can't control your contractor's expenses. You can't control inflation. And to say we're going to have rent control, if this is what that comment was, is a backdoor comment on that, amplify what you're really saying here, please. That's my, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Trina Pierce, followed by Jordan Grimes.
Thank you, councilmembers, for letting me add at the last minute there. I just have a question because I'm just kind of hearing about the SB 1000. And the way I kind of read it, would it be input from the residents from the different areas, or is it just the city involved? Or would you guys be having residents with this? Because I know this is future plans. So would the residents be involved in this, or is it just the city members or workers?
Mr. Dahl, please.
The goal would be to include an outreach component with the residents. That's, that's really a key component of SB 1000, is an engagement.
So just an outreach where you just talk to us one time? Or will we be on some committee to look in, look into some of these future things that are happening, or?
It will be developed over time with input from the community and direction ultimately from the city council.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you for that great explanation of, I hadn't seen it like that, so thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker is, in-person speaker is Jordan Grimes.
Good evening, council, honorable mayor. I'm going to keep my comments short because I think this process continues on, will continue on for, for quite a while. But just on the, on the topic of the, the jobs housing imbalance, one of the things I really hope that we can get from staff going forward in the future, I think it would be really helpful to know how many residents, there's a really great presentation with the, you know, longitudinal house employer household dynamics earlier. It would be really helpful to know, I think, how many of our residents, or excuse me, how many of our workers are commuting in, not just from outside of San Mateo, but specifically from outside of the county. I think having that data, knowing where our workforce is coming from, where they're commuting in from, would be really useful to, to people when we talk about things like traffic, when we talk about things like, why is this happening? So that's just, you know, something I was thinking about during the presentation. I did really appreciate Deputy Mayor Pappan's points about sea level rise. The nature conservancies, Green Point Calculator on sea level rise, I think, would be really useful for us to incorporate during the general plan process. It's something that I would encourage staff to look at. But then just getting back to the, the topic of the jobs housing imbalance, based on both HUD data and the LEHD data that we talked about earlier, San Mateo has added 21,000 jobs between 2010 and 2019. In that time, we've issued building permits for 2,063 units. So we're behind. Like, yes, the jobs housing fit, like, yes, we're, we're one to one, but there's been a huge influx of jobs and there hasn't in housing, and I think we've seen the result on housing prices. That's it for me. Thanks.
Thank you. Online, if we could, please, Sean Reese.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name's Sean Reese. I'm a field representative from the NorCal Carpenters Union at Local 217, and I'm here to talk to you about providing area standards for construction labor within the general plan. Area standard labor language needs to be the template that developers use in the great city of San Mateo. I would like to express to you that without these standards, the construction force is systematically abused through wage theft, 1099, where workers have no workers comp when injured on the job, and a litany of safety violations. Healthcare and a livable wage are a vital necessity to the workers building these projects within the plan. Apprenticeship programs ensure the projects are built to the highest degree, and local hire ensures not only tax revenue from money spent by the workers, but ensure those workers can enjoy the basic things in life, like spending evenings with their families, maybe attending their child's Little League games, or going to a dance recital instead of sitting in traffic for two hours. The language that should become the policy here in San Mateo would support responsible contractors that are already doing the right thing by their clients, employees, and the city itself. These responsible contractors have proven time after time that they can perform with the highest standards. This policy would bolster San Mateo's working class and cultivate a responsible market for good contractors. This would create a minimum standard for developers that are coming into San Mateo, telling them you value your citizens that build on our land. Adding area standard labor to this plan would enter the city's prequalification language. You will show your constituents that you value not just the city, but also the men and women building the city itself. I would very much like to have a real and valuable conversation with each and every one of you on how you can cultivate a prosperous construction industry. The NorCal Carpenters have over 1,200 members here in San Mateo County, and each and every one of them can be a great asset to this plan. I look forward to talking about this with you in the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lori. Lori, please unmute yourself.
Good evening, Mayor Boniat and councilmembers. I would like to first go Lisa Diaz Nash's comments. I think they're well said, and she really does capture what the community is thinking about right now. Regarding the goals and policies for historic resources, I appreciate that you've added some of the requested language regarding acknowledging all types of historic assets, specifically historic sites and districts, and strengthening some of the language regarding surveys. Regarding policy CDP 3.2, the language says, consider protection of resources. Considering protection does not follow state law, and I think the language needs to better reflect the state law and federal law that mandates protection of historic resources. CDP 3.3, the definition of historic resources is still too limited and does not address state law. I've commented on this before, and it wasn't really changed. I request that you add in more of the language of the text from the San Mateo Heritage Alliance Propose Plans and Policies for Historic Resources. And since I have some time left, I'd like to say that I've been tracking what's been planned and approved in San Mateo. And right now, since Kiku Crossing and the garage, we have about 18 projects downtown that propose over 850,000 square feet of office space. That'll bring in about 5,000 people. In addition to that, there are 737 housing units, of which only 336 are below market rate. And add to that 2,400 parking spaces for over 5,000 people. I realize we're trying to get rid of cars downtown, but we're just not there. We don't have the transit options that we need to really reflect that. And so I'd like to request that you look more closely at the jobs housing imbalance and require that some of these new buildings include more housing instead of just office space. And I'd also like to see more retail downtown so this truly is a fully serviced community downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker is Pamela Riddlemeier.
Hello, good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for having this meeting. I am a resident of San Mateo. My name is Pamela Riddlemeier, and I'm also a founder of the Burrell Neighborhood Association. I really appreciate all the time and effort that's gone into this general plan update. It's very thorough and equitable, and I'm very impressed with the amount of public outreach that's been conducted. I have made some comments in writing over the past few months, including sending some in today. I just wanted to briefly mention a couple issues. I think in, I'll start at the end with the safety element. I did not see anything regarding extreme heat events in the safety element, and I think that, you know, sea level rise is extremely important for our county. We are very much at risk from damage from sea level rise, but extreme heat events are also something that we're going to be seeing more and more of. And that creates a need for things like cooling centers for people who might not have adequate air conditioning, especially older people. So that brings us to the land use plan, which is the only time that I did see heat mentioned in the entire general plan update. So it was good to see that it's there. And then more specifically with the land use plan, especially a goal seven, which calls for designated, designations for new uses for housing, shopping, services, and jobs. And then only a few places are mentioned, a few shopping centers are mentioned to maybe be transitioned to mixed use. I'm wondering why there were just a few mentioned, because there are others in the city that I would like to see listed here, if there's going to be any named at all. And I think I'll just leave it at that. I've made more detailed comments in writing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And that was our last speaker, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. With that, I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to the council for final comments, directions, staff's asking for direction.
I'll start. This is going to be a little in the weeds.
This is going to be a little in the weeds, but bear with me. I, I'll just go point by point, and I'll follow up with staff later to share my notes. Starting with Land Use Policy 1.3, we've talked a lot, actually, during this meeting about mixed-use development and wanting to strengthen the language beyond just encouraging development, mixed-use development to produce residential components. I would like to also expand on that idea, and as well as the Policy 2.2, which talks about community benefits. And so I think that there's, I think that we could look at the potential of mixed-use development to provide a scope of community benefits that could include residential, it could include affordable housing. And so I wanted to add in to some of the callouts when we were talking about community benefits in this specific policy. It mentioned affordable housing, increased open space, public plazas, recreational facilities, offsite infrastructure improvements above the minimums, and I would like to explicitly consider adding subsidized retail space for small businesses and nonprofits that provide community support services, creation of childcare facilities, and specifically pedestrian, multimodal safety improvements. And those are, I think, a number of specific community benefits that this council has discussed in prior council meetings as more, a more comprehensive list of community benefits. Moving on to Policy 3.2, this is regarding the commercial development that is adjacent to residential areas and supporting an appropriate transition, and so that we don't have, you know, that we have right-sized aesthetic to graduate intensity and density into residential neighborhoods. And I think that that specific call-out came about in the north-central neighborhood, looking at the hazard hardware that abuts residential properties. And so I would like to, you know, echo my support for this, you know, the word, the words "appropriate transition," and I would also love to see there an additional action item to clarify objective standards, to codify what a transition could and should look like. Under, under the Action 3.3, which is a new one, which says incentives for support services, study, and as feasible, implement economic incentives to encourage and sustain the development of support services uses, and particularly in underserved areas. I was thrilled to see that addition, and I wholeheartedly agree. Under Community Health, Action 8.1, there is a call-out for collaborations for community health, and, and I guess I would like, you know, sort of more generally speaking, to add some language that expands the definition of community health more broadly, so that it's not specifically or limited to healthcare and quality healthcare. I would love to see us include language around improving health and well-being and reducing environmental health disparities, expanding access to affordable, quality healthcare, and mitigating negative environmental health hazards, so that we're talking about environmental health and our physical health together in that goal. Under Action 8.3, this is regarding the city investment and use of funds collected, used funds collected by the Park Impact Fee to invest in programs and public improvements that connect residents with opportunities to increase their physical activities. I would strongly suggest that we include an action item that specifically calls out developing a land acquisition and city investment policy to ensure that open space and recreational facilities meet community needs. At this point, you know, we know that we are behind in terms of our stated goals of the per capita to open space ratio, and yet we do not have a land acquisition policy in place to address that need and expand open space beyond what's already created through, you know, private development. So I think that, you know, specifically in neighborhoods like north-central, which is the densest neighborhood, you know, there, we have far outgrown the King Center facility, and I think that, you know, we are really constrained by the limited land that is in that park, and there may be an opportunity and a need to look at land acquisition to expand green space in north-central and other areas as well. But we lack a land acquisition strategy. Moving on to equity-priority communities, under Policy 8.1, there is, there's a goal to, there's a goal stated around community preservation, and with specifically calling out the prevention of displacement in equity-priority communities by protecting tenants and helping homeowners remain in place and funding affordable housing. I would also be remiss to not specifically call out the many small businesses that are also at high risk of displacement in the development process and gentrification trends. And so, you know, I think when we, when we're talking about community preservation, for me specifically, I think that that definition needs to also contemplate the impact to our small business community and retaining small businesses in this, you know, in San Mateo. Okay, under Action 8.5, the north-central plan, I was very happy to see the environmental justice additions, and I guess what, for me, is missing in the north-central plan is, you know, it says, "Prepare a plan for north-central." It does not go so far as to say, "Prepare a plan and equitable budgeting policy to fund the plan." And so for me, there's a, there's a gap if we're talking about creating a plan, but we're not talking about mechanisms for funding. So I would strongly encourage folding that into the action items. Thrilled to see the urban agriculture goal, that's Action, or, sorry, Action 8.2. I strongly support and agree with the Policy 9.1 for inclusive outreach. I was happy specifically for the call-outs for culturally sensitive outreach to historically underserved communities. I think it's, I think we can assume that culturally sensitive also may mean linguistically appropriate, but it's not specified, and so, you know, I just would question, you know, want some clarification there. I would like to suggest the addition of a land use action to improve and standardize communication about development outreach specifically around the decision points. I think that we have gotten stuck in a lot of, a number of community outreach processes for specific development projects because there's a confusion about what is a courtesy notification, what, you know, what is the scope of decision-making at any given time? Is, you know, if the project application has already met objective standards, it therefore must be approved according to state law? I think that there's, there's a widespread confusion about the development process and where community members can make meaningful contributions and give meaningful input, and where they can't, right? Sometimes the decisions are, you know, sometimes, sometimes that's not, you know, what is being decided. And so I would like us to take a hard look at ways that we can improve and centerize our own, our own community, our own communication processes. I would like to suggest the addition of a, another action item, which is also to have a public-facing portal, like, for example, on the What's Happening in Development website, where we could standardize what we present about each project and call out specifically what community benefits were derived from those development projects. I think that a lot of people, you know, they go onto the project pages and they have, you know, it's not apparent, how, what is, what is this project get us as a community? You know, what are, you know, what, how many, you know, how many dollars of in-loofees, or what was a contribution to the childcare fund, or, you know, what was the public art contribution that was associated with this project? And I think that there's a way to surface that in, you know, on our city website and to the community, and prioritize that kind of outward communication about community benefit that we're already getting from each project. I'll add another action item, which is, which is very near and dear to my heart as a former CERT graduate. I would love us to take on the process of inventorying and assessing our own disaster readiness, specifically for existing recreational and community center facilities. You know, in the event of a natural disaster, our community facilities will largely serve that purpose, so they may become shelters, right? They may become cooling centers. And I think that when we look at, you know, these aging facilities that are now, by and large, 50-plus years old and need to be reinvested, and I think that it's really appropriate for us to think about their dual function as we plan for resilience and disaster preparedness. Sorry, this is a lot. So, under community design and historic preservation element, I was really happy to see the recommended new action specifically calling out the urban tree canopy and the tree support for low-income homeowners. And I would just would like to suggest an addition, which is adding climate-adapted trees as well as urban agriculture, so perhaps, like, for example, fruit-bearing trees where appropriate within the public right-of-way. And so, you know, we did, you know, there was this whole addition of urban agriculture, but I didn't see that threaded through the, you know, the language in the urban tree canopy new action. Very much in support of the A3.4, that's the Historic Design Standards. I think it was very well crafted. I would like to suggest an addition to the community design actions specifically to develop and adopt objective standards and incentives for space-efficient mixed-use and commercial development of subterranean and rooftop amenities. So, long ago, when we were doing outreach with our youth for the general plan process, they, you know, they were saying, "Why don't we underground community center spaces? Why don't we underground, you know, some of our grocery stores? Why can't we have more activated rooftop spaces?" And I think that there needs to be more meat and direction from the city in terms of how we look towards development of those kinds of spaces, underground and on the rooftops. Happy to see, under safety element, we're now on safety element, the action, I think it's 1.11, wholeheartedly agree. And, and then just to kind of add on to what Deputy Mayor Pappan was talking about with the sea level rise funding, there was a call-out for the establishment of a dedicated general fund to support efforts to address sea level rise, including sufficiently supporting the one shoreline, and I would also echo the interest in the idea of potentially an impact fee or development fee associated with projects that are along the shoreline, so it's not just coming out of our general fund. And I was, let's see, I agree with the energy supply policy 7.7. Happy to see all of those new recommended policies. And then I'll just end with, and I'm not totally sure in which element it belongs, but I wanted to make folks aware that the San Mateo County Equity Department is currently doing a study, in the early stages of doing a study of, to, let's see, they're studying and inventorying the vendors to look at how to become an anchor institution. And so I think that as we move forward, the, you know, the intent of anchor institutions is using our resources and assets in our own hiring and promotion powers, investment capacity, and procurement dollars to redress structural inequities and health disparities. So that's the goal of an anchor institution, and the county is actually already undertaking that effort. And I think that that kind of, that has synergy with, with one of the other commentators about what is the city's role in creating good jobs and promoting livable wages, and looking at our own internal processes, like whether it's looking at our investment funds and making sure that we're, you know, we are divesting in fossil fuels, for example, or that, you know, we are looking at the way that we procure different, you know, resources for the city in a way that is supporting small businesses, right? That is a lens that I think that we can apply to, you know, the way that we operate as a city, just like the way that, you know, we want to walk the walk when we opted into 100% clean energy through PCE. So, you know, I will throw that out there as, you know, a goal that I'm not totally sure where it sits. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you. Other council members?
Councilmember Goffles.
I like the idea of a CDD, Community Development Dashboard, a community benefit dashboard. That was somewhere in there. The community benefit dashboard, I think, is transparency where the community really wants to know, and we're already collecting all those fees, they'd like to see where it's going. It's solid.
Thank you. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yeah, I was very happy with staff's incorporation from, from input, from, especially the general plan subcommittee, and I felt like I got, I feel like all my concerns were addressed in that, so I'll make it even quicker, so I don't have any additional comments on it.
Deputy Mayor Pappan.
Thank you. So I think one of the callers talked about, with respect to historic preservation, we wanted to make sure that we were complying with state law and not only encouraging it, so I'd like to see that correction in there. To answer your question on the slide, I would be willing to add Shoreview and North Shoreview as an equity-priority community, especially because of their location so close to the freeway. I echo the comments about transitioning from commercial into our residential neighborhoods, especially around Ace Hardware. I, that's a very compelling argument, and I definitely think we should be addressing that. And then I, if we could put something in there about encouraging the use of organized union labor, that would be okay with me as well. It'd be a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, let me second that last one. And then let me say, I am actually quite humbled by listening to the comments that I've heard. Also, I deeply appreciate the improvement that we saw in outreach after it became aware. I mean, I'm not sure all the members of the public know, this process has lasted a while initially. After the pandemic hit, outreach became impossible, we actually took a pause, but we came back and we realized we needed to tune up our outreach efforts. We did that. We have received much better, I think, input from our efforts. We have received much better, I think, input from our efforts. And so I really appreciate that. I want to say that I completely agree with comments that were made by Councilmember Lee, that all of those things need to be looked at. I agree with strengthening, as member of the public Ken Abrew out there mentioned, strengthening language in many of the ways when we're talking about housing, where it says encourage, we need to come up with language that actually sets forth action. So we need our language to be more action-oriented with our plans. And I think, as we will find, we may have to do in order to be in compliance with state laws as they're coming down the pike and changes are being made. I believe the housing element effort and affirmatively furthering fair housing are going to actually compel us to be much more specific in the words that we use when calling for housing and also for equity. So, a couple of notes that I made back here. Also, historic preservation is very important while I'm going through my notes here. And I want to see that, make sure, as Councilmember Pappan said, that we're doing everything as per state law. The jobs and housing imbalance and the jobs and housing fit. So it sounds almost like we have jobs and housing balance, although I find it hard to believe since we've added so many jobs. I would have to get some better explanation before I'm able to fully understand it. But the concern I have is the jobs and housing fit, because that's where we get so many people commuting into the city to work. And that's one of my main interests, is that we provide housing where people who commute long distances, especially many work, commute long distances to work lower-paying jobs because they can't afford to live here. So, the need to build affordable housing, of course, is paramount. But I also agree with many who say that we have to build housing in general because the supply is too small. And I know that if we work with the principles of supply and demand, and I've heard detractors from that, but still, I have to believe, knowing that we have had a shortage here for 40 years, and we continue to have a shortage, not only here but statewide, which is why we're seeing so much state legislation mandating different ways that housing can and should be built. I'm very proud of the efforts that were recently made by the Carpenters Union and Assemblymember Buffy Wicks to pass AB 2011, which was signed by the governor recently, which allows greater opportunities for infill development, which is basically all we have here. Infill development is who we are. We don't really have any empty land. So this is going to make it easier, it's going to make it smarter, it's going to provide opportunities to get things done and to provide good jobs that we've been hearing about, where the right wages are paid, where the employers are actually honest people who have to use apprentices, who need to provide healthcare and prevailing wages, which will pretty much preclude what we're seeing with wage theft. And I've been seeing some huge claims on wage theft. And that's something I've been talking about for years here. Finally, this is good legislation that is going to do a lot about that. Sea level rise, I want to echo those concerns. I also want to talk about what Pam Riddlemeier mentioned, which was the need for some things that aren't addressed, such as cooling centers, because we are starting to have more high heat events. And preparedness, I don't know that we have this preparedness, but let's say that there was to be a flooding event in our low-lying areas. I don't know how prepared we are, but I think that if I'm not that aware, that maybe a lot of people aren't either, and we should find a way to make that information readily available so that people know how to act if we get a flood. I'm not sure our CERT, and I'm not a member of a CERT team, regrettably, I probably should have done that, but I want to make sure they're prepared to work on this stuff. Also, there was a question that came up, oh, I also support anchor institutions. I think it's a smart thing to look at. I'm glad the county is doing that work, I'd like to see the city get involved with that. Question was raised about some words that were used, displacement and cost burden. I know that some people may not understand what we're talking about when we're talking about renters who live here and in many places throughout the Bay Area, who are actually being displaced by the high cost of living, which means they can no longer afford to pay when their rent gets raised, more than 50% of their income. And that's, that's 30% is considered rent burden and 50% is extremely rent burden. So when you're paying that much of your income to live in a place, then your other, your other cost, you know, your thought was, I think, the person that mentioned this, to be careful with, because many people are, what was it, suffering, feel the pain? Yeah, suffering. So there are actual housing acts, the Federal Housing Act of 1968, California has a law called the Affirmatively Furthering Fair Housing Act. It requires that we provide stability in housing, housing must be safe and healthy, and there must be equity in the way housing is done, and people are allowed to rent. And one of the most important things I feel, I always feel, is that people, just basic in all aspects of life, need to be able to have justice, dignity, and respect. And it's hard to have dignity if you don't make enough money to pay the rent. It's, it's hard, and so people need help with these things. And we do need to protect people from displacement. So those are pretty much my concerns in addition to some of the things that I heard or in concurrence with many of the things I heard tonight, so. Have you heard, okay, we have more.
I just had one, Ms. Pierce talked about perhaps, you know, a committee with the neighborhood as it relates to SB 1000, and that may be too much detail for the general plan, but to me, it may be necessary for us to, to do, you know, sort of a committee with the community and the city. So anyway, I just wanted to give my two cents on that.
Two or three cents.
Sorry.
Okay, thank you. Does that pretty much give you what you're looking for tonight?
So through the mayor.
Yes.
I do think, and I'll let Zach chime in afterwards, but, you know, there was a pretty exhaustive list that, that was gone through, and we need three on, on each. And so I want to go through, so for, for sea level rise, I heard three, at least three yeses on that, addressing sea level rise. For the community benefit dashboard, I heard three on that. For union labor and for anchor institutions, I heard two on that. So I need to poll if there's, okay, so three for, three for union labor, three for anchor institutions. Deputy Mayor Pappan brought up the SB 1000, the, the community committee, is, okay, so we've got that. And then there's sort of the remainder of Councilmember Lee's list. I know that Mayor Benia, you, you wanted, you were fine with that, but then there's the, the remaining items on that list. And I need to determine whether there's a third member of council interested in pursuing those items.
Do you want me to review?
Could you abbreviate or review, please?
Okay, so, including community benefits to call out subsidized retail for small businesses, nonprofits, creation of childcare facilities, pedestrian multimodal safety improvements, as we're defining community benefits.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Clarifying objective standards when we're discussing what appropriate transitions are from commercial developments to residential. So this is the Hassett Hardware. Yeah? So, under community health, specifically adding to the, to the verbiage, improving health and well-being and reducing environmental health disparities, expanding access to affordable quality healthcare, and mitigating negative environmental health hazards. So, expanding the scope of health to include environmental health.
And our standards.
Correct.
Yeah, I support that.
Okay, great. Develop a land acquisition policy and, a land acquisition and city investment policy to ensure open space and recreational facilities meet community needs.
Yeah, I think that's good, we could use more park facilities and open space.
So at this point, we don't have a land acquisition policy. This is, the specific action is calling out city investment, using funds collected by park impact fees, but we don't, we are lacking a land acquisition strategy, policy. So for example, with the King Field, we're far outgrown and the need to redevelop the, the facility, but not, but only contemplating redeveloping on the existing land and having no mechanism to even consider additional land acquisition to expand into our, expand our park space. So we don't, right now, we don't have any land acquisition policy for the creation of park space.
We do have park fees that we collect, but we have no policy to expand park space.
Through land acquisition. So it would be contemplating the development of land acquisition policy.
I recognize it's very aspirational, I don't know how realistic it is. One thing I might offer, however, is perhaps some of those fees could go towards renting from our school districts for some of their park facilities, some of their pool facilities, that sort of thing. I don't necessarily see us acquiring land, but perhaps the ability to use other people's land, and particularly school districts, would be something that I, it's, it's just been in my craw for a while now, so that'd be something I'd take a look at. I don't know about the acquisition part of it. The last park we acquired, quote unquote, was Burrell Park. We had that land and we created it, right? We didn't acquire that land, correct?
Right.
That was a city lot. And before that, it was Bay Meadows, right? With the several parks in Bay Meadows, that's all I can think of at this point.
Bay Meadows parks were contributed to us in the development agreement.
Yeah. I don't know, I just.
Okay.
I do like the idea of shared space. I know that we already have a deal like that, I think, out of Bayside Academy School.
That's right.
So we could, I think it would be good to look into possibly doing more of that, but I don't have a problem with looking for opportunities to add park land using park fees. If we're able to get a developer who is looking to create a larger development, they don't want to have open space inside the project, but they might contribute some land to us that we could, that we could develop into a park, we would need fees for that, right? We could use our park fees for that. So I think this policy could cover those types of possibilities.
I, I think that's, I think this is going more towards an evaluation of how we utilize our park impact and our park in lieu fees. And, and that, I think is, I mean, it's not unrelated, but I do think it's a separate conversation.
But the policy could lay out something like, work with developers to acquire space for parks, you know, something, some framework that sets us up to at least be looking to do something to add to our park space, because we're already actually short, I think, of park space.
Zach's going to tell us that's a goal and not a policy.
I was going to note that we did have this discussion as part of our, our open space conservation and recreation element, and I'd have to go back and look exactly, but I know there was a number of policies and actions that spoke to this general topic of land acquisition, looking at schools as opportunity areas, and then I know funding was interlaced in a number of different ways. So I don't know if there's an exact policy like that, but I know within that element, it's touched on in a number of ways.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Two, two. Okay, so adding the call-out specifically under community preservation for protecting commercial and residential tenants from displacement.
What's the mechanism? How do we do that?
So this is policy 8.1, under equity priority communities. It, the specific goal is, or the policy is, community preservation, prevent displacement in the equity priority communities by protecting tenants, help homeowners remain in place, and funding affordable housing.
So you're seeking to add commercial tenants to that?
Yes. So this right, specifically only talks, it, I think it doesn't.
Small business type of tenants, that's what you're discussing?
Yes.
Okay. I, I can see the value in that, yeah.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
I, I don't think, is, I guess is my, my personal opinion, I don't think that the city councils should start getting involved in trying to choose what businesses succeed and which ones fail, because then you start getting into, well, do we want this nail salon, or, but they've been here forever, but, and, and I think it's one thing to have a policy to want to protect residents, but with businesses, I think it's going too far and it's kind of overreach, and it's very difficult to do. So I won't be supporting that one.
Okay, and then it was monitor the ratio, so under, let's see, this is a new action, monitor the ratio of population to open space in equity priority areas. I mean, I think maybe that's covered in the, in the open space plan. So, but is, is that specific to the equity priority areas? Is, like, where does the equity priority areas, is that, is that integrated in, in the other plan?
It's more citywide when we're looking at our park space to resident ratio. That could be a component of the north central plan.
Okay. So I, I would like to propose that action item to monitor the ratio of population to open space in the equity priority areas, which I, I guess now is including.
Parks or open space? Parks are not considered open space, right?
Yeah.
You mean parks and open space? Because we have both.
Is there a clarification there, or?
Parks are more, open space is the broader term, but then you, a park is usually a more developed recreational.
So Sugarloaf is open space, and Laurelwood is a park, right?
So parks and open space.
Yeah.
The action, the suggested additional action item to inventory and assess disaster readiness of existing recreational and other community center facilities, create facility improvement plans for resilience and disaster preparedness.
So I know that we were examining our recreational facilities for upgrades some time back, I remember touring and looking at several recreation facilities. Do we know what the status is on that work?
We're, we're re-looking at the recreation facilities master plan, looking at it through a little bit of different lens now, so we're going to have to come back with that. But I think, you know, all of our facilities fall under our continuity of operations, continuance of governments' plans that we all have for, for all of our departments. So we do have, I don't know if we have it as fully fleshed as, as Councilmember Lee may be anticipating, but we do have those plans in place for disaster preparedness.
Right. And for instance, cooling capacity, if we needed to have cooling centers for people, what are we doing for that right now?
Yeah, we have, you know, that only is an issue typically when we, when a holiday falls on it, on a really hot day, because otherwise the library is open.
Okay.
Maine is open seven days a week, our branches are open, and then on, on business days, our, our recreation centers are open. So we sort of automatically have cooling centers available.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think, you know, Councilmember and I, Deputy Mayor Pappan and I served on this, the, the recreational strategic planning CAC, Community Advisory Committee, like, how many years ago? And it, I don't remember that at all being part of the conversation, the disaster preparedness lens. And so, you know, if we are going to do that again now a third time, I think it's important that that's factored in.
Yeah, and also, just so you know, the county also is contemplating upgrading the event center a bit to be an emergency center as well, and it just happens to be in our backyard. But in any event, I throw that out there.
Coordination.
You're right, I don't recall us talking about emergency stuff 100 years ago.
Right.
We got a park and rec plan.
The binder was thick, yeah.
So we're always coordinating with the county on efforts like that, are we?
Efforts like?
Efforts like. Efforts like disaster preparedness. If the event center is being converted to a disaster preparedness center.
Yes.
We're participating in that, yes, okay.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Pepin, was that a third for assessing the inventorying?
That's fine by me.
And, let's see. Did we, I can't remember if we captured the sea level rise funding. Okay, we did, okay. And then, and then the, the anchor institution.
That's gathered.
We're good, okay.
Yep.
I'll let the other ones go.
So I think, are we, have we addressed everything now? Zach?
Yeah, I, I think the feedback that we've gotten here today covers the, the full range and gives us good direction moving forward as we go forward with the draft general plan, yes.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, sorry, forgive me, one more. Councilmember Pepin had brought up North Shoreview and Shoreview as an equity priority community. Okay, thank you.
Okay, well then, I think our work on item 16 is finished here. As an information item, we've fulfilled that. Next on the agenda tonight is reports and announcements.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
We received hundreds of letters regarding Dragers. The community very much wants to save Dragers. And it has recently come to my attention that the development going on there has the opportunity to do that. I believe we need to schedule a meeting, December 1st, is that available?
That was the request, was December 1st.
Yeah, and I understand that is a concern, so I'm totally in favor of a special meeting, December 1st. I think I see nods over here.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so we will schedule a special meeting for December 1st. Is 6 o'clock workable for council?
Yes.
Sure.
I'm not sure if I'm gonna be able to make that meeting, because I have a previous commitment, but I will try my best to.
Okay.
That day.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Yes.
Reports?
I would, given all the, the speakers and all the emails that we had concerning the alleged signs theft by Commissioner Nugent, I think it would be appropriate to, to put it on the agenda to just have a fact finding mission on exactly what happened. I think the one thing that, that I think a lot of people can agree about is the facts are not necessarily clear. You know, I, I reached out to him to try to get it from his side and, and he, he chose not to respond, but then I did get to hear a couple of public statements and they, and they didn't seem to be consistent. And I think public officials appointed or elected should be held to a higher standard. And I think semitans deserve to get to the bottom of what happened. So I would be in favor of putting something on the agenda where it could be sort of a fact finding mission. So to see if, what exactly happened, so.
So, yeah, I would concur. I mean, I, we heard from a lot of folks, not just in the chambers tonight. We've all gotten a lot of emails as well. And, and I concur, I think the public deserves to have us look at this. There are issues of trust and integrity and ethics and judgment that have come up by this. And I think those issues remain in question. The fact that there is not a criminal prosecution, as my understanding is, because Mr. Newsom chose not to do it, not because there was some determination that a crime was not committed. So we don't have that determination. We don't have a determination whether or not this was a location that Caltrans actually does allow signs. We need to take a look at that. We don't know why this sign was plucked and not the other ones that were there, so we'd have to take a look at that. So there are a lot of things, I think, that remain in question. I think we've heard from the public outcry that they would like us to take a look at it. I, I would concur that somebody that we appoint as a commissioner should be held to a certain standard. And because those questions remain about integrity and trust and ethics and judgment, I think we owe it to the public to look into the matter further. It has not been resolved by any means and the outcry is there. I think we, as a body, have an obligation to respond to that outcry. So I would want it to be agendized as well.
So I guess I've been paying attention to this too. I, I think all of us have had signs in the past and everybody I know who's ever posted signs up has had them taken down at one point or another. And it seems to me, I, I remember a lot of my signs going missing. And at one point I realized that a lot of them had been taken down by the Public Works Department because they were in the public right of way and places that they shouldn't be. So I think that that has happened quite a bit. I.
That didn't happen in this instance.
I do think that we should, I do think that there's, there's definitely a place for the city council to, to look into the conduct of commissioners, and we've talked about this in the past. But I don't think that agendizing it in a public meeting gets us to any clearer truth on what happened. I think that either our city attorney can, can conduct an internal investigation or the district attorney's office can conduct an investigation whether there was a crime committed. I, I think, other than that, I'm not interested.
So I want to ask, because I think I had understood that there was some investigation and it was found that there was inconclusive evidence of any crime having been committed. Did I hear that correctly, or?
Well, wait, and I also want to know.
He did not, and that's what we're asking for, so we can get to that information.
Okay.
That, so it's not a trial.
And I just want to say, for me, it's not a matter of a crime being committed. I don't need the DA to prosecute anything. We have on film that this individual took down a sign. What we don't know are the circumstances under which this individual was given several conflicting stories, what all of that means. And I think the public deserves that we get to the bottom of it. That's all I'm suggesting.
Okay, so I want to add a little bit to the mix here, because today I got an email from a gentleman who told me that he was really very upset because Adam Lorraine has stolen one of Rodland Harris's signs off of somebody's lawn. And he wanted us to have a hearing about it. Not only that, but I want to mention that lots of different things have happened to signs in the past. And in fact, what we heard described tonight, and what I heard several times with that, it's a very brief video. I didn't see the video.
He admitted that he was in the video.
Yeah.
So it doesn't matter how brief it was.
I wasn't talking about that, it was very brief. I don't know that the video, as we all know, videos, photographs, all sorts of things, don't necessarily always tell the full story.
Exactly. That's why we should hold a hearing, so the public knows what the full story is. That's my point. And I want to hear from the city attorney, I don't want to hear from the police chief, because I don't believe there's been a determination. There are questions that remain that for me, somebody who's gonna sit in an appointed commission, I need to know whether or not they acted with full integrity, with trust, with judgment, with ethics. I need to know that, and I don't have enough information.
And this is not gonna go away until the truth comes. So every single planning commission meeting, every single council meeting in the future, we're gonna get these, these inquiries, inquiries, and it's, it's not gonna go away. So we can wait until the next council wants to, to investigate this, or we can do the right thing. I voted for Adam for this position, both on the subcommittee and on the, on the council. This is not a personal vendetta, it's, it's a standard that I think we should hold all of our commissioners to and ourselves to. And there are a lot of facts that aren't known, and, and we all admit that. So why are we just gonna sweep it under the rug and say everything's fine? And, and let's go on business as usual, because it's not gonna happen.
Let me just add a few points here. One is that, you know, if the council wanted to agendize an, an item to talk about this in more detail, and I would add that this item is actually not on the agenda right now. But if the council wanted to add an agenda item to discuss this, I mean, it could. But I mean, the ultimate question is, you know, under the charter, there's a process for removing a commissioner. And that process, you know, doesn't require cause. Members of commissions, you know, serve at the pleasure of the council. In order to remove a commissioner, it takes a majority of the council plus one. That's what the city charter says. So, you know, if, if the council wanted more factual information as to, as to what happened, I mean, that would really amount to nothing more than sort of explaining, well, here's what, here's what the statements were of various parties. You know, here's what a video appears to show. And if the council could discuss that, but I mean, the question is to what, to what end? I mean, just for the end of, just to talk.
We don't know. We have to find out the facts, and once we find out the facts, that may determine removal. I'm not comfortable having somebody sit as a commissioner who's out there taking down political signs. I'm just not. That is a standard to which will not be acceptable to me. So I'd like to find out. And I think the public wants to find out. We owe it to the public. I don't care what side of the aisle you are, I don't care who you're supporting. This is not okay if you're a commissioner. And we need to answer to the public as a result of that. I don't want to be in this position, but we are. I mean, this institution deserves it. Sorry to get so indignant, but I, you know, we owe it to ourselves. Sorry to interrupt you, I apologize.
You weren't interrupting, that's quite all right. So again, if the council wanted to agendize some further discussion about this, I mean, it, it could. But I just wanted to remind the council of what the charter says about removal and maybe some kind of, a, a conversation could help inform whether or not to agendize that for, for another council meeting. But I wanted to focus on what an ultimate goal could be and what the process is for that.
Well, I would submit that a further hearing may lead me to that conclusion.
I think we have another comment over here.
In terms of facts, there are very clear, knowable facts, which is that Adam Nugent has not been involved in any of the campaigns. He is not an endorser, he is not a donor, and he is not canvassing.
Listen, we're not here, we're not here to decide the facts right now. We are here to determine whether we should have a hearing to decide the facts. That's all I'm suggesting. Because I've seen your email and it didn't have accurate things in it about the law or anything else. So if you want to sit here and testify in for Mr. Nugent, I'm telling you right now, it's not gonna convince me. I think the public deserves more than that.
Well, I haven't seen or heard everything you have, so I'd like to hear what this council member has to say.
So it is a matter of public record on websites, who endorsers are. It is a matter of public record who donors are. And attending a kickoff does not equal active participation in any campaign. And, and there were, I've been to multiple campaign kickoff events. I've seen photos of lots of people who ended up not becoming supporters or actively engaged. So the idea that that, that a photo of somebody joining an event equals an endorsement, donation, or active participation in a campaign is simply inaccurate. And so based on the facts that we know that he has not, this, there is no, there's no basis for political motivation. I do not see any justification for pursuing an investigation.
I'd like to hear from the police chief, if I may. Because I think what was represented in Councilmember Lee's letter that I saw on the email was, no crime has been committed. We can't be representing that, that to the public.
So I, I can give you a, a summary of what, of the police department's action. We did receive the report of a theft. We investigated that theft. And at the request of Mr. Newsom, that case was not forwarded for prosecution.
He chose not to prosecute it, correct?
If he had not made that request, it would have been forwarded to the district attorney's office.
And he, he still can make that request if he so chooses?
Yes.
Okay. So if he made that request, would that have changed your, your mind?
Well, I think at that point, it's a matter of the law. And at that point, we have the district attorney involved. And it's a crime or not, and that would be determined by the district attorney. So it is, it is a crime to steal signs, okay? But I have to say, many signs are placed in places where they don't belong. Many signs disappear.
At one point, he said he was taking off signs because it didn't belong. And then, he says, he's picking up trash and inadvertently threw it away. So which is it?
I don't know.
And not only that, but Caltrans actually allows signs in certain areas. This was not up above on the 92 right of way. So we don't have all the facts in front of us. So my suggestion is, this city deserves better. Let's investigate the facts as the public has called upon us to do. That's all I'm suggesting. I think the public deserves it.
And this is why it's also very important to vote.
No, I'm sorry, there's no public comment right now.
We still have to go back to the housing.
Yeah, right.
Right, we're reports and announcements, and we're gonna get through it.
Okay, well, we do have a matter to go back to, which is the study session.
So I want to be clear that there are not additional votes from the remaining three members of the council, correct?
Correct.
Okay, then the public needs to know that. Thank you.
Okay, now we're gonna return to the study session, which, okay, timeout for the city clerk, five minutes? Okay. Okay. On the study session item, which was the housing element, the draft 202331 housing element, and this is regarding the letter from HCD and the city's response to the letter. So public comments have been completed, and it is now time for the city council to deliberate and provide direction on this item. It is a study session, there is no vote to be made, it's informational. So who wants to start? I think I can start. I, I found the letter from HCD to be exhaustive, and I've read and I understand staff's position that, well, this cycle of RENA is different from any other cycle before. And I hear that staff says, well, we don't need HCD's compliance, I mean, a certification, which I'm not sure I agree with. I don't want, my big concern is, I don't want the city of San Mateo to be found out of compliance by HCD, and for the draconian steps to be put in place whereby developers could seek projects under the builder's remedy, they could, the state could take away our local land use control from us until a time when we do get into compliance, they could stop funding for our transportation and many other projects that we are currently in progress, working on many of our public works projects and our other important efforts. And I don't think, I want to risk that. What I think I want to see is that we need to divert whatever amount of expertise that we have in our community development office towards the effort of making sure that we do everything that HCD has asked us to do, and, and get it submitted in time so that we're able to have a certified housing element by the deadline of January 31st. And I think that's the only safe path here. That's my recommendation, and I want to hear what other council members think. Thank you.
I guess it begs the question, you think that you have addressed most of what's in the letter through this matrix, correct? Or what you can address, I think there were a few things that you, you weren't too sure, and we're going to need further clarification from HCD, right?
There were three policies that we were, we have a recommendation, but we would like either council input or direction on if you want us to move forward with the level of commitment requested in the HCD comment, and so I think particularly these three policies right here, where we have comments from HCD, we list the current status, and what we are looking for is, does council want us to move forward with making the commitments to the level that HCD is requesting in their comments?
Well, yeah.
So for 84, it's looking for making a specific commitment about removing parking requirements. In 85, it talks about removing constraints, so functionally, those are, that will likely entail zoning code amendments. And then addressing this comment with regard to special needs group, group home requirements, and that'll also require a zoning code amendment.
Through the mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
So when it says request, does that basically mean they're demanding that?
Yeah, the HCD comment is in that middle column, where the recommendation is, we're actually, the staff is asking input from council. Do you have any objections with council, with staff adding the language to align with what the HCD comment is looking for? Because it is making a commitment.
Okay, so I forget the wording I said, then, is, is the HCD basically saying that if we don't go this far, then we're not going to get it approved, we're not going to get it approved?
They would be, well, what they would do is, they would not, they would come back with comments and say, our housing element is not certified. The city adopts, but then ultimately, HCD is the entity that would certify it, and then if, the next step would be finding that it's not in substantial compliance, which would then open up a path for projects to use the builder's remedy.
Removing a require, a parking requirement that is a constraint to multifamily development, do we have a lot of those? Because I know the state has just removed some within a half a mile of transit corridor anywhere, I mean, transit anyway. So everything else without, outside of the city would require, what, one per bedroom or whatever it is?
We would probably look to align with state density bonus, but we would have to go through the process of evaluating, and I mean, in theory, we might be looking to go further than what's allowed under density bonus. So I think the default would be aligning our requirements with state density bonus law, but that's the challenge of making a commitment before you've gone through the full exercise to understand. I mean, there's housing projects that might be further from transit, or in areas where parking might be warranted, but under state law, we may not be able to require it. So those are all questions that we don't have answers to, but they're looking for a commitment on what we're going to do here.
Have we taken into account AB 2095? Reduces parking requirements within certain distance of transit?
Within a half a mile of transit, we cannot require parking.
Right.
As a matter of timing, did that, didn't that just become a law, and then we got our letter after it was signed by the governor or before? Because this, we are being now mandated to not require some parking, but...
I think since our letter, actually, this 84 probably is less of a commitment, because state law has already pushed us a large, a good chunk of the way there, but we still do have plenty of parcels outside of those half mile radiuses where our parking standards would still apply. So we would be looking at a citywide parking policy for these multifamily projects.
Okay. So let me suggest this. We may want to modify, but I don't know that we can go as far as removing. There could be some modification as we do the outreach to the city, and remove some that would be a constraint on multifamily development, but it's a tough, without the public input, it's very difficult, but I don't know. I wouldn't agree to removal, at least I would not. I think that's, that's kind of tough.
Through the mayor, are there, are there different degrees of, of different options we have here? Because I mean, I kind of feel like this is, this is kind of rush process to just make a huge policy decision, like, right now? So I guess what I'm saying, kind of going a little bit further on Deputy Mayor Papin's comments, so are there any incremental steps that, that we can, you know, show that we're moving, going in the right direction, where we're getting more information without completely removing the parking requirements?
I don't think we need to commit to removing parking requirements. The wording is making a firm commitment to remove parking requirements that are a constraint to multifamily development. So the piece we don't know is to what degree those parking requirements are a constraint to multifamily.
And that involves discussions with developers and the community, I guess, ideally. But since we're in a constrained position right now regarding time, who's the best source of us to get this information from? People, because they're looking to create a better environment for building housing, which means reduce costs so the housing can be built, right?
Ultimately, yeah. I mean, it's looking at constraints which are functionally come down to cost to per housing unit. In, in many cases, probably going with the standard, parking standards set under density bonus law could get us most of the way there, but we would have to look at it in more detail as to how much of a constraint, how much does a certain number of parking spaces cost, and maybe there, it's in other areas of the city? We just don't have those answers. So it's making a commitment to remove parking requirements that are identified as a constraint. We don't know the threshold that constitutes that constraint, and that will come through the ultimate, that exercise to implement that program.
But we could say that we're interested in, in reducing parking requirements to what would be allowed under the housing density bonus, and you could analyze that?
We could, but I...
In all, in all, in all, yeah, applications, right? So...
That could very likely be the outcome, but I don't know that the thresholds in density bonus necessarily correlate to whether that requirement is or isn't a constraint.
Right.
And so that's where there, there might be some economic analysis. We would just have to look at it comprehensively and decide the best path forward, present that information.
Zach, do I have the timeline right? So you're saying, in our housing element, we're going to say that we commit to removing constraints to buildings' housing. Then we're going to study whether the parking requirements are constraints to the housing. In the meantime, our housing element is going to be approved, and if we discover that the parking requirements are not constraints to building that housing, then we don't have to implement any additional policies with regards to the parking. If we find that the parking is a constraint, then we can come up with, at that time, some policy to address the parking. Do I have the timeline right?
Yeah, that, that would be the approach.
That's all that the states are asking us to put into the housing element right now?
They're looking for that commitment, so the liability rests in, say, in '24, '25, whenever we identify that's the year that we're going to focus on implementing this program. If we then move forward with that, we're going to have to have a defensible analysis for the final action we take, if it's, if there's question of if it's aligning with what. So say we choose to not remove any parking standards because we found it's not a constraint. The burden of proof, I think, would functionally be on us to demonstrate that we went through the steps and made, reached that conclusion. Yeah, that could be an outcome.
And we would be able to do that. Or if we do find that the parking requirements are a constraint in 2025, whenever we've finished the study, then we can figure out what our response is going to be, how we're going to incentivize and make sure that those multifamily housing projects actually go forward with the parking or without.
Yes, I think with the level of commitment, if, say we did identify parking as a constraint, but for various reasons, there wasn't a desire to reduce or eliminate our standards, that's where we would then be, be open to being inconsistent with our housing.
The 2025 council could say, we're going to subsidize parking, because we really think that the parking is important, and we want to see these projects get built. They could cut, they could cut other building fees or something else to make sure that the project gets built, because that's what they want to see, without necessarily getting rid of the parking. That's one of the creative ways that could happen here. Am I missing it?
That is correct. I think in one, in some senses, the parking commitment is a little bit easier to make because of the longer term trajectory of where a lot of development is going in, where the body of state law already exists in many respects with housing and parking requirements. But yeah, in general, I think for any number of these where they're looking for this, that they use the term firm commitment, this is kind of the expectation they're looking for as we move through. as we move through implementing the actual program or policy.
I'm comfortable with the, the language of removing constraints, but I don't want to hamstring future councils from incentivizing or removing constraints in other ways. It sounds like it's meeting HCD halfway.
I would maybe look to the city attorney on exactly how that's parsed, but I think in theory, that sounds workable.
Well, a couple of things to consider here. One is that, you know, we're talking about the, the general plan, the housing, and, you know, HCD is asking for these firm commitments. So follow through will be required. Otherwise, HCD could come back and say the city is out of compliance with its adopted housing element. The other thing to consider is that this firm commitment, the, the follow through, would most likely be in the form of a change of the zoning ordinance in terms of the, what parking is required, where, for what types of uses. And that follow through could, you know, meet that commitment that the city has made to, to HCD. But in, in adopting the housing element, you know, then at that point, it's up to the city, including future councils, to then sort of, you know, implement that. You know, the housing element is only amended, you know, once, you know, every, too often, every seven, eight years, right? So normally, you know, a council cannot bind future councils. But you know, this is, we have to understand and appreciate, like, this is the decision making process for the next housing element cycle. So the city will need to follow through on whatever commitments that it makes.
Well, it's kind of interesting because what council number goals is suggesting is really their comment 85. 84 is a bit more specific, but 85 is that general language.
To specify whether the identified policies and codes will be revised to remove constraints.
And we're going to assess what those constraints are, correct? And then we would presumably modify codes to, not restrict the constraints, but get rid of the constraints.
Yeah, so I mean, playing that out a bit, we, we would evaluate, say, a lot of, we're looking at missing middle housing, say, a small grouping of townhome units on, on a lot. We would be looking at the full range of site standards. So it might come back and say, we need to reduce or eliminate setbacks, maybe increase height. There, you could be looking, a constraint could be any one of those site development standards. And so what it's saying is, we're committing to whatever those outcomes are to removing them. So it could be increasing height, reducing setbacks, parking standards, open space requirements, a daylight plane. I mean, anything is on the table for removal that's a site standard.
Or modify.
If the subsequent exercise identifies it as a potential constraint. So the commitment is whether or not there's ultimate will to do that. Maybe the daylight plane doesn't, there's, so then we would have to go through the exercise of how do you either determine it really isn't a constraint to missing middle housing or commit to removing it or some alternative that's equivalent. So doing nothing wouldn't be an option, saying, that's great, but the daylight plane is, is a high priority for the community. This is just an example standard, but walking through how that could play out.
Right, so parking is but one thing. And I guess I'm, I'm wondering if we agree to 85, which is a general thing, which could include the daylight plane or whatever else you might have suggested, it could include parking. So why are we getting so specific on parking? Doesn't it fall within everything under 85? And we could agree to do 85? Because there could be a menu of things that might be the constraint, and the minute you remove one, the other one works, you know, or become, it pencils more and the constraint is gone.
85 is focused on that housing category of missing middle housing, that kind of affordable by design. Usually, you're looking at higher density on smaller lots, so projects up to, say, 10 units. That specific category, 84 is the more inclusive multifamily.
But can we use the same language? Can we use the same language that just says, we're going to eliminate constraints to, to development of missing middle, of multifamily, of special needs group housing? We're going to eliminate, we're making a firm commitment to eliminate the constraints that prevent this housing from being developed?
Yeah, and that's why we wanted to highlight it for council to make sure that, I mean, using word, verbiage like that does create a firmer commitment. So we want to make sure that there's an awareness of what that means as it plays out, as we bring these policies forward.
And they're telling us we have to say at least that. And the only question, it seems to me, is whether we're going to commit to specifically eliminating parking requirements or if we're going to allow the future council to figure out what constraints they're willing to eliminate in order to make sure that the development happens. Because that's what they need. Is that fair?
Although I would suggest modify instead of remove. Don't lock yourself in remove, maybe just a modification. Let me...
So from what I'm hearing from this discussion, I just want to make sure that we're tracking on the same page, that if we were to incorporate the word multifamily into the policy 1.13, so it would be encourage development of missing middle housing or missing middle and multifamily housing, this program should include specific implementation, blah, 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 all the same. And then it's not, the call out is not specific to parking. It's, it's, it's a broader analysis of all constraints, which can include parking or, and maybe many other things. So does that, and then that eliminates the need for 84? Is that, is that what is being said right now?
There's a number of different, of requirements. So there, there's requirements that we specifically focus on missing middle housing and producing that. So that's a subset of housing. Then we've got broader housing categories that focus on multifamily residential more broadly in the constraints there. So I think there, these two policies are looking to achieve slightly different things. Whereas 1.13 is focused specifically on how do we encourage more production of that missing middle piece of housing?
So through the mayor, I, I think we would address them all separately as the individual comments, but it would be the same thematically, which is removing constraints for the production of middle, missing, missing middle housing, reducing constraints related to parking requirements that impact the production of multifamily housing. So we'd, we'd, we'd hit them all just separately as, as the, as the individual comments, but they'd be, it'd be the same thematically.
So do they want to hear how we propose to do that? I think that's a different question, right? I think they do.
I don't think we have that ability at this point.
Yeah, okay.
Well, in that case, I, I feel comfortable having hashed this out with, accepting the recommendations from staff. As they are.
Yeah, their recommendation is that they ask us.
Right.
And I think...
Go ahead, please.
When we're requesting input, you can see what the comment is, and obviously, the, the goal is to as comprehensively as possible, address each of these comments. And so for ones like this, for an approach like that, that gives staff good direction on how we then frame our response. We update these policies and programs hearing this discussion play out. So I think this discussion and kind of the points you're raising help give us that direction.
So that it is, we will do everything under power to remove constraints, whatever that menu may be, both for multifamily and missing middle and group home?
And there, there are additional comments within the 91 beyond here. These three were highlighted, both for what they're looking for and because they're emblematic of other ones as well.
Right.
Any comments specifically on the group home?
Not unless you want to provide them.
No, I think group home is so hard to place that we need to actually increase the range of where they possibly could be. So I'm totally in favor of that. Okay, are we ready for, do you have anything else here?
Well, I just wanted to, if we're okay with this, are we okay with that? Then I just wanted to revisit the discussion about the affordable housing, maybe it's an allowance or a density minimum per square feet for nonprofit faith school sites. That's a site specific ordinance to promote affordable housing development.
Yes, and I think the discussion, Christina mentioned that it would be difficult to do it as a general overlay, but that we should put a policy in place, I think, if I understand correctly, that would address certain types of uses, where this policy would say that these additional uses are now allowable.
I think what the policy would do would have staff develop an ordinance that would, that would implement that. So the requirement wouldn't be necessarily the policy. It would be us developing an ordinance that set forth all of the specifications and, and the conditions which we would use that ordinance.
So we're looking at religious institutions, school sites, any other sites that we can think of that need this kind of?
Yeah, nonprofits.
Nonprofit.
I was thinking Quora, for example.
Sure, but just listening to what you were saying earlier, I heard a reference to the inclusionary zoning ordinance and production of housing on smaller sites that may not be subject to the inclusionary zoning ordinance. So it may be something like smaller sites that you would want to incentivize to include affordable units, whether they're nonprofit or like whoever owns them. It could be someone with an interest who holds land. And so you may want to look at it more as a land use site by site kind of issue as opposed to who owns the site or who the developer is.
And we would incentivize that by reducing fees or, there's a number of different ways, I guess.
There's a number of different ways we could do that. And that's, so the policy would direct us to explore that and bring it to council so that council could give us direction on what the applicability would be, what incentives could be, what, what any part of it could be.
Okay, yeah. Because like you outlined, daylight's plain, setbacks, all those different things could all come into play. Okay.
And that could also help with 85, I would say, with the, the missing middle on those types of sites.
Yes, okay.
So you're saying that would fall under a new action and not a policy?
It would come back as an ordinance.
The action would be to develop an ordinance?
We do have language that speaks to this in the land use element. And so I think the question would be, does the council want to see this included in the housing element? Because there's, I think with this, there's less knowns, and as we've been discussing, there's a high level of commitment or expectation for exactly what the outcome's going to be in the housing element. The city has more latitude to explore this type of policy and look at the best way for it to be applied as a policy or an action within the land use element.
I, I personally would love to see it prioritized in the housing element. And I think that there's enough to go on, knowing that there are small sites that will never produce 10 plus units, but there's a desire to create affordable housing on smaller sites. And we know that that is true from multiple community partners and, and that there, at this point, there is a gap in, in the policies to incentivize or promote or even allow for that kind of affordable housing development project beyond just what we have in, like beyond the ADUs. So, you know, I'm, I'm talking about Quora, for example, our domestic violence service agency. One of their number one increasing costs for operation is their emergency housing vouchers that they're giving to, to domestic violence survivors. They have parcels that, you know, are, are adjacent to one another. And there's, you know, there's been ideas and discussions and need, you know, certainly community need to think about the opportunity to create affordable housing on those sites. But, but because of the restrictions of our zoning, and we don't have a way to accommodate that kind of small parcel project. The same is true with multiple faith organizations that I've talked to. So this is, for me, very clear that we have an opportunity to fold this into the housing element. There's a need, there's a desire to build, and, and there seems to be a path forward.
So I'm picturing that corner church in an R1 neighborhood being converted into R4 affordable housing? What are we talking about?
Um, let's take St. James.
Yeah.
Right? So St. James has a, has their church facility, and then they have a, another parcel, right, that they, they want to build affordable housing on. Also, the...
Why, why can't they build affordable housing on it?
They can only build up to the ADU allowable density. And they want to build more.
Can't hear you.
That's R1 right now?
Yes, it's R2.
Okay, so how many units could they put?
Um, four. Whereas they would like to do eight. I mean, I'm throwing out this number, not knowing, like, they haven't presented a project, right? But they, they have discussed with staff the idea and have run into road, roadblocks.
I'm, I'm just confused. So it's not a question that they can't build the maximum allowable affordable housing right now. It's that in that neighborhood, the maximum allowable is four units. So you want to change the zoning on a corner in a crowded R1? I, I feel like we need to go through the entire process of public input before we get there. No?
I feel comfortable putting forward the goal of creating an ordinance that, that looks at how to support affordable housing development on these site, these specific sites.
And which includes increasing the amount of housing that is allowed on the, the existing land use designation?
Correct.
By some proportion or?
And the intent would be creation of a for designated deed restricted?
So it's to maximize the ability to build affordable housing. As long as it's affordable, then this would say that they could build a factor of two times what, what was allowed on the site or something.
I mean, we're always talking about how we need affordable housing, right? Like, everyone agrees we need affordable housing. So this is a way of, of lifting our own, our own limitations that we're putting on community partners who want to create affordable housing on smaller lots that, that are, are unable to beyond, you know, ADUs. They get no incentives for, for building, you know, just ADUs, even though they're creating designated deed restricted affordable units.
Why, why in the housing element rather than the general plan?
Accountability, speed. This is one of those moments where we say, let's, let's advance affordable housing policies. That's, that's what we're being asked to do.
You want that as a goal in the housing element?
Um, well, I, I need clarification if it's a goal or an action item, but I do want it in the housing element. That's what I'm asking.
Right now, in the, in the draft goals, policies and actions for the land use element, policy P315, housing in support of institutions, support the development of housing at institutions such as schools, churches and other facilities of an educational, religious, charitable or philanthropic nature as consistent with the mission of these organizations. We do have that general policy in the land use element. That could be supported by a more specific action in the land use element.
I think even though it's already there, we should talk about it for another 45 minutes.
Well, it's in the land use element. It's already affirmed in the land use element, and this is an opportunity to bring, carry that, that concept and that strategy over to the housing element. We're on the brink of, you know, of maybe not being certified. This is the chance to do everything we can, right? This is the chance to do everything we can, right?
I feel like it's already there.
So this is a way to create more housing where housing is allowable otherwise, but to create more?
Well, create specifically more affordable housing.
Affordable housing, right.
Right.
Yeah, which is actually
There's...
Yeah, an important outcome, more affordable housing. So I feel like it's worth bringing as a goal to the housing element. As some, to show efforts that we're taking to demonstrate that we can allow religious institutions, nonprofits, even schools, teacher housing, affordable teacher housing, to increase the amount of the affordable housing that they might otherwise be allowed. If we could do that, that would be a great thing.
The only thing we would want to look at is, right now, the SEQUEL review for our housing element is an exemption because we don't have any rezonings. If we do have a policy that does potentially have rezonings, that might change the level of SEQUEL review we need to complete.
Yeah. SEQUEL becomes a big deal then, yeah.
Never mind.
So do, do any of these other policies include any zoning changes?
There's going to be a variety of zoning code amendments, but not rezonings that would change development capacity.
So, just to complicate matters, it, it wouldn't necessarily need to take the form of, of a rezoning, though. There could be a permit process, there could be an incentive ordinance or something of that nature. You know, the more, I'm thinking about it as I'm listening to you, it's really about removing constraints. And so maybe it's not about rezoning for higher density. Maybe it's about moving, removing some of the development standards that are a constraint to putting what would fit on the site. And so I, I think there's multiple ways to do it. And so I do think it is accounted for in the land use element in a, in a more general way. And so it's a question.
But with limitations. I mean, we know that religious institutions and schools have problems getting approved to build housing on their sites.
And nonprofits.
And nonprofits, right. Seeking to break through those difficulties and make it possible, provided it's all affordable.
Sure, they have difficulty fitting everything on one site because they have other things taking up space on their sites already. And so a lot of times it's the parking that ends up being the issue that's the constraint. Sometimes it's the setbacks. They can't fit everything in the building envelopes where they go. And so, you know, there are open space landscape requirements. You know, a lot of those sites have large parking lots. Some of the sites aren't that small themselves. It's just that they're at their capacity. But as Councilmember Gothols mentioned, you know, they are also, those types of sites are also in neighborhoods that are already impacted in some way. And so, you know, it is a consideration, but that's why we would bring something back. And so I think you could do something that was removing a constraint without committing to a rezoning. I don't think it necessarily would need to be a rezoning. It just depends on the desire of the council.
I'm fine with removing, a policy to remove constraints to support that land use goal.
That, but that's, that would stay in the land use element. I think the question is, does this policy get added to the housing element?
I'm okay with adding it to the housing element if it's not a rezoning and if it's not changing it. If that satisfies what you're talking about. It very much felt like we were changing the zoning. Without that, then I don't have a problem with the policy.
It sounds like we can skin the cat another way without rezoning, and I think it's worth exploring in that land, in the housing element. And so I, I fully support that direction.
I'm okay with that.
As you provide direction to staff, I would just suggest, instead of characterizing, say, religious institutions or faith institutions, that the same wording from the land use element be employed. What Zach indicated earlier, you know, assembly uses such as, you know, churches, you know, other, other similar institutions. Okay?
I'm, I'm okay with that, to remove the constraints. And, yeah, we'll do a exempl, exemplars of who those might be. And that's work to remove the constraints.
I would just note that when we put it in the housing element, there's going to need to be specificity. I, if we add a new policy, it's going to generate new comments and we might be then required to heighten the level of commitment we add to that. So I just want to put that out there to be aware of what that could generate.
That means it could come back and say, you need to commit to revising your zoning requirements? Is that what you're suggesting?
I, I just know that based on the comments that we've seen, that every aspect of our policies and our programs were, are being sought higher levels of commitment. So I guess the question is, is the potential benefit worth the potential commitment that goes into it? If, if you want us to explore it, we absolutely can. But I think if we make it too general, we're going to, they're going to be coming back to us with comments to make it more specific.
But I, can I just get some clarification? Because what, when we're talking about removing, you know, committing to modifying or removing policies or codes that are constraints on missing middle housing development, that similar language could be repurposed, right? For, you know, evaluate, you know, evaluate constraints and codes that are constraints to building affordable housing on, on parcels that have uses such as da, 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 right? How is that different?
I think in theory it's similar, but I think what Zach's saying is important too because HCD has been somewhat unpredictable on their comments and they have tended to ask for more. And so I understand the logic in that and using the same language and using them as a model, it should work. But I think it's, Zach's concern is real that, that it could generate additional comments.
Would, would those comments be something like, now, you better do that or you'll be out of compliance?
Maybe, or it could say, conduct more analysis and tell us exactly what, and then we won't have time to do it.
Yeah, because we'll run out of time.
We've, there's a lot of work identified in here over eight years. And that doesn't mean that we can't commit to this in the land use element, but there's just a different, different level of commitment in a much shorter period of time.
I hear your residence, or resident, how did you say that word? Red, reticence.
Reticence?
Reticence. And, you know, and I, you know, generally speaking, you know, I, I, I think I try to demonstrate a very high sensitivity to capacity and, and like acknowledge, fully acknowledge the amount of work that's gone into this. In this case, you know, we're talking, you know, this is not going to be the camel that broke the back. This is, this is a good policy that's well-conceived, that is responsive to a community need that's been articulated in multiple instances over many years. And it's addressing a need that the community has, has been, has shown, you know, is, is dire. And there's a widespread outcry to produce more affordable housing. And this is a clear strategy that we can show leadership on. And I'm not afraid of accountability to this idea.
Well, I think my problem is it's the how, it's not the what. I mean, we all concur. We spend a lot of time, we have a housing shortage, because let's, let's get that on the table, that we all concur. We all concur we have an affordable housing shortage. Get that on the table. We all concur that there have been people that want to use their land to promote affordable housing. Got that too. What I'm hesitant to do now is, is give up the ability to make it work for our community. So if we put this in the housing element, what we get then is the state mandating how it must work for our community. And I'm, now I'm hesitant to do that because I don't want the state telling us how to do it. I, I'm, I love the idea, but I don't need them telling us how to do it. I think we as a community should come together and figure out whether or not it's a light plane or whether or not, they don't need that big service parking lot, right? So they could build some housing on it and maybe go subterranean and put parking on it. I don't know, I'm just suggesting. So now I'm getting uncomfortable with the minute you put it in, then they're going to tell you how to do it.
I want to say that's...
And, you know, and I don't think the numbers are big enough to impress them, you know?
I want to say it slightly differently, which is if we wanted to adopt that policy, we could adopt that policy. But putting it in the housing element locks us in to an enforcement mechanism from the state that means that our local control could be taken away. Whereas we could pass the policy in a completely separate way without necessarily putting it in the housing element. Does, does it, it just feels backwards to me.
There is definitely room to put it as an action in the land use element. And we could do the same exercise, the same evaluation, but we wouldn't be bound by a timeline and by certain outcomes.
I'm much more comfortable with that rather than giving HCD another chance at, at taking away our local control or forcing our staff to perform miracles.
Okay, other council members, how do you feel about that? Okay, we have, okay?
Yeah, I concur. I, I'm not willing to put it in.
Okay, that's, that makes four, I think. Oh, it provided you're on board.
Let's do it.
Okay. I see you closed your laptop.
The battery's running low.
Oh, okay.
That's not an indication.
Okay, are we, have you got all the input you need now?
I feel like we've gotten good overall direction. And I think this was as much to provide you as a council with an opportunity to ask questions of any, any number of these comments, not just exclusively these, to confirm staff's recommended direction. I think these discussions have also been very illuminative to how we approach the rest of our responses here, because obviously they're still very conceptual. So from a staff perspective, I think we have a lot of good insights as we move forward with addressing these. Because you can see from our responses, we are still thinking out exactly how we address each one of these comments.
Okay, so now my question, we do our process and we send our housing element back to HCD. If they get it on January 31st, how long does it take them to decide that it's compliant or not?
When we resubmit, they will have, it's, it's either 60 or 90 days. We've heard conflicting guidance on for second review. In the past, it's been 60 days, but we've heard now that they may take up to 90 days. So at this point, we don't have time between now and January 31st to go through another review. And so the, the plan that we're looking at moving forward with is, is working expeditiously to get each one of these comments addressed within the housing element, do update the document accordingly and then resubmit it to the state. Ideally, we're looking at that happening in December. And then moving forward concurrently with their review, which is, as they proceed with round number two, bringing it back for the adoption process in January, which would be a public hearing for recommendation before the planning commission and then bringing it to council for adoption. And then we would be drafting the associated resolution to make the findings for substantial conformance. We know at least through their first review, we have a pretty good idea of what they want to see in our housing element. And state law specifies adoption, not certification, is the key action that needs to take place before the 31st. So that is the plan between now and January 31st to get it submitted to HCD and then concurrently bring it back. So we have the ability to adopt in housing element before the 31st.
Okay, so state law says adoption, not certification. How has that worked out for the other jurisdictions in Southern California?
What, the guidance we've heard is that we really shouldn't compare ourselves in a number of ways to what's gone on in Southern California, whether it was for how they were treated there. The comments, we've even been instructed to not look at certified housing elements, but instead we need to look at our jurisdiction in these comments because what worked for one jurisdiction might not work for another.
Of course, we're all different, right, yeah. But I'm just very concerned about the dates, the deadlines, the requirements, meeting the requirements by the stated deadline. Don't want to be suffering draconian penalties. Do we feel like we're assured of that?
Mr. Mayor, do you want me to make a motion to adjourn?
A, a motion to adjourn? No, you don't have to. Are we finished right now then, Zach? Have you heard everything you need to hear? Okay, good. Well, then, we're going to be adjourning after we have, and we've done reports and announcements, so we have three different adjournments tonight. People too, who have passed on to adjourn in honor of. The first one is Lori Lawson. Lori, Laura M. Lawson passed away on Monday, October 3rd. Lori contributed greatly to the San Mateo community during her 12 years of service on the San Mateo Foster City Elementary School Board. Lori was involved in Fiesta Gardens International School and in other San Mateo leadership and youth leadership programs. In addition, Lori helped support the building of the new main branch of the San Mateo Public Library. Lori will be remembered as a devoted leader who built partnerships, supported teachers and helped ensure the success of every student in her community. We send our sincerest condolences to Mark, her husband of 46 years, and her sons Ford and Clark. The next is Margaret Donilon. Margaret McCabe Donilon passed away on October 26th, 2022. Margaret was an accomplished public servant, beginning her career in Galway, Ireland. Margaret, her husband Michael and her son Brienne moved to the United States from Ireland in 1975. After living in Vermont and Michigan, the Donilon family settled in San Mateo County, where Margaret continued her career in local government with the city of San Mateo. Margaret retired in 1998 as deputy city treasurer for the city of San Mateo. Margaret was a beloved colleague to those she worked with and an accomplished financial professional. She will be dearly missed by her son Brienne, her daughter-in-law Susan, her daughters Annie and Molly, her sister Kathleen Corcoran, and many beloved nieces and nephews and their children. We sincerely thank Margaret for her years of service to the city of San Mateo and send our condolences to her family. And for the next one, I'm going to pass this over to Councilmember Gothols.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and this is, I actually know all three of these individuals and I will miss them dearly. But Linda McCoy is the third individual who we're adjourning in honor of. Beloved founder of San Mateo softball team, she was a proponent of opportunities for girls in sports. Today, there are many more opportunities for women in sports because of pioneers like Linda. She passed away at the age of 70, but her legacy in San Mateo endures in her daughter and all young women who are competing on softball diamonds citywide.
And so now let's have a moment of silence. We are adjourned.